Sorry, my voice is a little froggy here. Just turn it right over to City Manager Ola.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Paul Mary. The first item is actually the public hearing that's required by statute, so it would be appropriate to call members of the public. We do have the microphone.
We need to do a roll call.
Roll call.
That's why the city clerk is here to keep this honest.
Moberour?
Here.
Rosie?
Here.
Tac?
Here.
Herman?
Here.
Allison Osby?
Here.
Paul Mary?
Here.
Cummings? Present six. So next is our public hearing. Do we have anyone registered to speak?
Yes, we have several individuals in the audience. Mr. Gary Gray, and he's going to give me his slip when he comes up.
Oh, Gary Gray, H-15 West Linwood. The 2019 preliminary budget offers us a couple of unusual items. I'm going to talk about one of them. And that is the difference between the total preliminary operating budget and the expense restraint program amount. With the budget, with the preliminary budget, there was, I think, seven enhancements that were also included. I also have some possible enhancements to take a look at. But before I do, let me just say quickly, I, as you know, I did not attend the two day-long budget hearings, and I did not review them, so some of my comments may be something that, as we've already talked about. Anyhow. First enhancement. I was reading the Oshkosh Herald today, and it said, stated there that state aid to the city of Oshkosh has been reduced. I think the $300,000 or $400,000 difference between the current proposed budget and the restraint program should be used for that, or part of it. Another enhancement is to replace the University of Oshkosh funding that was supposed to be going to the transit system. That way, the transit system and the Transit Board Advisory Board will have some time to figure out what to do in the year 2020. Another enhancement is to add funds to the lead pipe replacements. That, as we've heard for a couple of years already, that it's an extensive program, and this would probably quicken the replacement of the lead pipe. The third enhancement is to use some of the money to improve the city's ISO insurance rating. That would benefit businesses and residents equally. Also. The next enhancement is to add some of the money to the levy for equipment fund. That would reduce the amount of money that the city needs to borrow by a little bit, and that would save, obviously, money in the future years. The last one is to set up a new miscellaneous expenditure account that would be used for unexpected costs that occurs during the 2019 year, similar to the reduction of the state aid and the reduction of the URO funding, which I believe is, was unexpected, because if it was expected, I would assume that the city manager would include those adjustments in the preliminary budget.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is David Rich Manich.
Thanks for sharing, Steve. I just saw about information about the wheel tax. And I live on Lake Rest Lane, and it's two and a half blocks long, and we don't get snow plowing or garbage pickup. So I'm not sure what the wheel tax would do for us. Putting in new streets, we put those in 20 years ago ourselves. That's it.
Stefan, I apologize, I can't read the writing. M.A.
You're not the only one.
Sorry.
Stephen Morano. Okay. Hey, Stephen Morano, I live on West New York Ave. I've lived in Oshkosh for about six years. I'm typically kind of small government, low taxes kind of guy, but I mean, the wheel tax, to me, makes sense. It's one of the reasons of government, right? Kind of defray some of those significant costs. Last year, I had a special assessment, so it costed my family about $9,000. So I can appreciate what you're trying to do here with the wheel tax. But, so reading the paper the other week, basically, I can't remember who said it here, but someone said something about, hey, there's always going to be a first and a last, kind of like, the people who've been assessed, like, what can we do, you know, for them? It's just past. And I understand, like, you can't, you know, someone's got to pay the contractors for the work that was done, I understand that. And for the city to take on additional costs to do that would be really difficult. So I understand that the people who have had the special assessments are going to have to pay that, myself included, I understand that. But the wheel tax on top of that, I know it's not that much money, but it's just kind of like an insult to injury kind of thing, that I'm going to be paying for my street and paying the wheel tax at the same time. So yeah, it's just, if there's a way to avoid having to pay both of those at the same time without adding a ton of complexity into implementing it, that would be appreciated. I mean, I can handle it, it's more annoying to me, but a lot of the people around me, it's a big, it's a big deal for them, so.
Timothy Smith?
My name is Timothy Smith, I live at 1705 Oshkosh Avenue. I attended and spoke at the Long Range Finance Committee's meeting when they discussed the vehicle registration fee. I will agree with many people, I'm not for more taxes. If I can avoid another tax, I would. But I'll give you just a little brief history of what happened to me. I closed on my house and moved to Oshkosh in September of 2015. About three weeks later, in October, I received a letter from the city saying I was going to be billed $26,000 for work on Westfield Avenue. That was pretty shocking. In the end, it turned out to be $19,000, but by the time you do the 6% interest over 15 years, I still pay 26 grand. That was 22% of the cost of my home. I bought a home that was well within my budget. If I wanted to spend another 20%, I would have. So because of the special assessments, I received a loan that I didn't ask for, that I didn't want, but by law, I'm saddled with. I really think the vehicle registration fee is much more fair across the board, because the way the system's set up right now is one or two people, or three or four people that live on a street, and the city pays their 33%. Everybody else that drives the road reaps the benefit of having a good road. I just think that's really unfair across the board. And in the end, my house payment went up 325 bucks for the next 15 years. Didn't expect that, didn't want it. I'm making it happen, but it's not what I wanted. As far as paying for the wheel tax or vehicle registration fee in addition to my special assessment, I'll agree with the previous speaker. I don't really want to do that, but I'll gladly do that with the knowing that I have the peace of mind that when they redo Oshkosh Avenue, or redo Westfield Avenue again, that I won't receive such a huge bill that you're just not expecting and not prepared for. I really urge the council, when this gets to your point of being on the table at a meeting, to take action on it, that you approve the wheel tax as, by what was recommended by the Long Range Finance Committee. I think overall, it doesn't make everybody happy, but it is a better system than what's in place now. Thank you.
Ryan Hayman?
Hi. This is a bit of a divergence from the previous speakers, and it's also less of a comment and more of a question, so stop me if that's not really what this is for, this is my first time coming to one of these, so. It's really hard to find information about the 2019 budget online anywhere, so I just wanted to ask this here. My question is more specifically just about, like, the general budget allocation. And I was just wondering, is the portion of the city's budget allotted to the police department, and I guess associated areas, being increased? And additionally, if so, how much and why? That's all I have.
I have no one else, but is there anybody in the audience? I don't see anybody. We have one more.
Hi, I'm Bruce Woodland, 403 East Lincoln. If we need the money for these street assessments for an infrastructure, I would like to know, why aren't we using the concrete more wisely for the streets rather than along the river? For the Riverwalk. The Riverwalk, from what I see and a lot of other people see, does not get that much business. The only place that I really see a fair amount of use, a good amount of use on it, is around the college. Or downtown, around by the convention center. Otherwise, there's hardly anybody anywhere else on it. So basically, I guess what I'm asking is, why couldn't we use the concrete for our roads, which are used more than the Riverwalk? Thank you.
Mr. Woodland? Could I have you complete this, please? Complete this, please. Thank you. Just real quick, Ms. Larson, we did post our draft budget documents online, correct?
Yes, the preliminary budget is under the city website, under the Finance Department, with all adopted budgets, as well as the prelim budget is available for full view of the public.
In addition, there's also copies at the library and City Hall, correct?
Correct. Hard copies, right?
Correct.
Thank you. So if we don't have any other members from the public, we will move on to discussion of the 2019 Capital Improvement Program, Public Works and Capital Financing.
Could we, could we call the public hearing close?
Yes.
You get to declare it.
Declare the public hearing close.
Before we move on, there was one specific question from the citizens, could we respond to that? What, is there a budget increase from the police department from 18 to proposed 19?
Yes, on page two of the budget, the police department is proposed to increase by approximately $385,000, or 2.9%. That's primarily for personnel increases associated with our collective bargaining agreements. That includes wage increases, as well as health and dental benefits.
So the operation side is pretty segmented, as far as?
No increases in staffing, that's why we have the enhancement packages.
All right, very good, thank you.
Anyone else like to add anything? Maybe then, since we did respond to that piece, also, Mr. Robbie, are we even using any concrete on the Riverwalk? I didn't know that we were planning to use any concrete on the Riverwalk.
Yes, if you look at the Riverwalks downtown, and I don't know, I don't think Mr. Davis is here, but most of the Riverwalk downtown is concrete. Here comes Alan.
Going forward, we, is that the plan, Mr. Davis? Going forward, are we going to be using concrete for any more?
It's really site-specific.
Site-specific.
In the downtown, we have seawalls that we have to tie together with the Riverwalk, and concrete's going to last the 25-plus years, and asphalt just wouldn't do the job in those situations at the Oshkosh Corp. site, where we have more room, we're planning on using asphalt, so it's really site-specific.
And Mr. Davis, I believe that a fair amount of the Riverwalk was funded with state DNR grants, correct?
Yes, about half of it's funded with grants, and the other half is with TIF funds, so typically, it doesn't have an impact on the levy at all. Is that correct, Mr. Ola? If that's what I remember off the top of my head.
That's a fair assessment, yeah. Most of it's been covered through TIF districts, so we could not redirect TIF dollars into our regular street programs, they would be out of the TIF service areas.
Thank you. All right, I think we are now ready to go on to the discussion on 2019 CIP.
Mr. Robbie can?
Want me to just jump right in?
Yeah, just jump right in, James.
I will start by bringing up on the screen the new, for this year, the interactive dashboard that is available on the city's website. You can get to it, it does still appear on the hot topics, otherwise, from the Capital Improvements page on the Public Works webpage, right here, the Capital Improvement Program Interactive Map. You know, this interactive map focuses primarily on, you know, projects that are geographically locatable. So, for example, vehicles do not appear in, you know, this interactive dashboard map, because it's, they don't really have a geographical location to tie them to. So there are some challenges with some of those things, but the vast majority of the projects are in there. As you open up, you know, the center map comes up to kind of a zoomed-out citywide approach. You'll see several bar graphs along the left and bottom side. Each of these are sortable and clickable, so for example, if I just wanted to see the 2019 projects, boom, I can click in the 2019 folder, and, you know, it filters that information out. Does appear I've got some graphical issues that I need to correct, some of the graphics don't appear to be coming up right, right now.
But I think, wasn't that the one, when we looked at it before, if you actually clicked in that window and it assumes that it'll fix it?
There's been some changes made since we looked at the preliminary draft. Yes, there were some difficulties with that, and taking some of that feedback, I worked with information technology to try to simplify some of those things. So it does look like I've got some graphical hiccups going on here. So, and then, you know, you notice as I clicked on and off things, the rest of the charts update and, you know, reflect. Same thing as you zoom in, that information on all the rest of the bar graphs updates. If you click on a project, let's see if I can get in close enough here to click on. Click on a project, it will bring up the actual descriptions that are straight out of the CIP book. So this was another tool, we've talked about it a little bit, I think, at some previous meetings, but trying to get a little more interactive approach to displaying the information related to the CIP. This dashboard has been developed with information technology. All of these, all of these, you can resize windows, you can turn some windows on and off, and it's also mobile-friendly, so it will rescale to the device that you're using. But I did want to bring this up here shortly, kind of an opportunity to show it off a little bit, and we've talked a little bit about it, but it is kind of a new tool, new opportunity yet, so I did want to take some time to kind of call it out and show it to everybody again. With that, I think we can move on, page by page, do you think, Mr. Ola?
I think at least section by section, certainly the comprehensive streets is probably the biggest one we want to, we want to talk about.
Right, so with the comprehensive street and utility improvements, continuing with the Oregon Street Reconstruction, you know, in 2018, from 8th Avenue to 16th Avenue was reconstructed, and a new deep sanitary sewer installed in that stretch. We will continue that project in 2019, from 16th Avenue to 21st Avenue. And again, you know, using the direction that we had gotten from council before proceeding with the reconstruction of the project in 18, we are continuing with that direction as far as street width in this 2019 plan. But again, complete reconstruction of all the utilities, streets, and sidewalk rehab as needed, and transportation will be continuing on with the electrical and lighting schematic as they have in the section that was redone this year. Steve, I don't know if you want to come up as we go through this a little bit? Thank you. If there are no questions, yes?
Just one question here. So when we're looking at the projected number of miles for street reconstruction for 2019, we're looking at 1.25 miles. Why is that significantly less than the 4.24 miles in 2017?
2017, as we look at some of the differences there, in 2017, we did have the two local street programs, we did have some new paving taking place related to a subdivision. There was also some asphalt overlay work on Snell Road that was done as a part of the asphalt program. But then there's also almost 3/4 of a mile of West Waukaw that was done as a part of a county project. So there were some other projects in there that were getting done that drove up the 2017 number. That table in the front of that discussion, I do have to update a little bit. As a part of balancing the CIP budget, that .13 miles of asphalt program has been pushed further back in the CIP, so I have not had a chance to update that narrative before the latest draft went out to you.
So it would be even less?
Yes, it would be about the 1.12 at this point. As we continue to go through, cold mix overlay is not a part of the CIP that's done under the operating budget, so there are some small lengths of street that get done with that. As you look at some of the breakdowns from prior years, you can see, you know, in 2013, it was just under 7/10 of a mile, 2014, a half a mile, you know, 2015, about a third of a mile. So it's kind of ranging at 3/3 to 3/4 of a mile range over the past five years. So again, it depends on, you know, how wide the street is, and what the prices are running on cold mixed asphalt at that time. So, you know, that's another, you know, if, say, on average, about another half a mile on top of the mile and an eighth of street reconstruction. So that is a number that kind of goes up and down depending on what it takes to balance out that part of the CIP.
I guess, James, in looking at the sanitary sewer from 1895, 1911, 1914, I guess that kind of tells us why that area floods a little bit.
Yes, certainly, you know, some of that sanitary sewer dates all the way back to the old combined system that was, you know, has been eliminated. But yeah, a lot of that is, there are some issues there, storm, you know. Again, you know, some of that dates from the separation of storm and sanitary, some of it, when it was separated, you know, the storm maintained the old system. In some cases, it was a sanitary, so.
It just shows how old some of our undergrounds, infrastructure still is.
Absolutely. Moving on, then, the other planned concrete reconstruction is Hazel Street from Washington Avenue up to Irving Avenue. The stretch from Washington to Merritt is pretty narrow right away, so that section of the street will be narrower. The section from Merritt up to Irving, you know, that current street width is fairly wide. And I think, Steve, we're planning about the same width.
We were matching, yes.
So, and then we're working with parks a little bit to see if, I know there's been some requests for maybe pedestrian facilities on the park side, so we're still, there's some coordination there that would need to take place to determine if that's going to be a part of this project or another part of the CIP that can maybe take that on.
When you say pedestrian facilities, you mean sidewalk?
Sidewalk or continuation of the trail system. Further north from here, there is, I believe, an eight or 10-foot-wide asphalt trail that goes through a portion of the park. So those are some things, you know, some of those details aren't completely sorted yet. Are there any other questions on that portion?
And just to go to Councilmember Herman's point, our youngest sanitary sewer in that area is from 1901. That's our youngest.
Just a baby, yeah.
Just a baby. So obviously, those are.
Infrastructure.
That's why the comprehensive approaches really makes the most sense.
Right.
And that, you know, we didn't really bring the, you know, the super multicolored map that I think Steve has brought in the past, but, you know, that goes to the comprehensive look at the street program is, you know, okay, how old is the sanitary sewer? How old is the storm sewer? How old is the water main? Do we have a significant history of water main breaks? What is the condition of the street? So is all of those factors combined together to evaluate what streets are going to be included in the project? And Steve, if you have anything you want to add on that?
Just that some of them, some streets are driven earlier in order to address critical areas on the way. Oregon Street is much more shaped on your 20th Avenue, but in order to get there with the underground utility infrastructure, we need to start at eight.
Okay, if there are no other questions there, I think we'll continue on into the other street section. First project, the Waukaw Avenue-Glats Creek Crossing. In 2016, when Winnebago County did the bridge inspections for this culvert crossing, this crossing was rated deficient. The DOT required us to post a weight limitation on this bridge crossing, which does have a negative impact on the ability of Oshkosh Corporation to get traffic in and out of this area. We had thought maybe if some projects had come in, we could get this done a little earlier. Since we didn't have that ability with some of the other emergency situations that had come up, we are getting this project programmed for reconstruction in the 2019 CIP. That would replace the Creek Crossing, the pavement over it, because there is so little cover over the culverts, the pavement in that area is also failing. And then we're going to look at sewer and water and get those extended under the culvert crossing before we reconstruct everything.
This kind of piggybacks with the storm water, but this is in addition to the $300,000 for a study for that same watershed, the Glats Creek Johnson Watershed, that full area.
Yeah, that's, the studies that we're looking at are trying to fine-tune, you know, we've had some high-level stormwater management plans in several of those watersheds, trying to fine-tune maybe some alternative practices versus traditional detention basins to try and control the flow and the flooding in those watersheds. So a little bit different strategy there. But we do have a hydraulic hydrology model of the Glats Creek watershed that we are using to make sure that the culvert crossing is sized appropriately.
Are we able to see that on the dashboard, James?
We should be able to, let me, yes. So it's just this area, you know, it's really a few hundred feet each way of the Creek Crossing.
And that's being funded through the utility?
It's a combination, the utilities, you know, the storm is the culvert crossing, and then the pavement restoration above the culvert crossing. There is some sidewalk work that needs to be done there, and then water and wastewater are funding their extensions to get underneath that Creek Crossing, because it's a lot easier to do it when the culverts are gone, and we can do it in open cut versus potentially having to jack and bore underneath the new structure after it's built.
Okay.
Next is planning for a future reconstruction of 9th Avenue, continuing west from Oakwood Road. Now that this entire area has. Now that this entire area has attached to the city from the town of Algoma, the right of way for this street, you know, Ninth Avenue is an arterial street, so the right of way, per the comprehensive plan, should be 80 feet. So this is starting a right of way acquisition process to get the appropriate right of way to, in future years of the CAP, be able to reconstruct this stretch of Ninth Avenue. I know over the years, we have received numerous requests from residents to do something with this stretch of Ninth Avenue. It is, you know, it is still a rural section, very narrow pavement, ditches on both sides. You know, there is some pedestrian and bicycle activity that attempts to make use of this stretch of road, but it is not exceptionally safe for those uses. So we need to start by getting the appropriate right of way so we can program in a future year for reconstruction. Right now, I think, Steve, we're out about in year four or five for the reconstruction, if I remember right?
And all these properties or right of ways are within the city, none are in the town of Algoma?
Correct, they are all within the city limits now with the last Zone B attachments that took place in March of this year.
Okay.
That was why we didn't program this for any sooner. We needed to wait till all those properties were in the city to really start moving forward.
Okay.
Moving on, just some of the annual concrete repair and life extension. You know, there are some sections, this is primarily arterial collector streets. A couple of years ago, for example, we did a lane of Keller Street out near Target, Fazoli's, Petco, that whole area. There was one lane that was just in really bad shape. So it was the use of this funding that's able to do a project like that, to extend the life of the entire street, so we don't need to do an entire street reconstruction because the rest of the street was still in very good shape. But for some reason, you know, on that stretch, you know, one lane just didn't hold up.
Are we able to see those on here?
The annual concrete repairs, we do not have actual locations picked out. I don't believe you do yet, Steve?
Correct.
So we do not have that mapped at this point in time.
And some of those are from storm sewer breaks or water main breaks too?
Well, if it's.
From previous years?
If it's related to a water main break, the water utility is paying for that patch in their operating budget generally. If it's storm sewer work that the Streets Division is doing repairs on, the stormwater utility is paying for that. This stretches where, you know, the street, for whatever reason, there is some utility funded, funding included in there because we may have to adjust some manholes, replace an inlet or something like that. So we need to make sure we've got some appropriate funding in there to pick up some of those issues. I think recently, last year, we did Eagle out by West High School. Was it this year or last year, we did Packer right by Jackson Street as well? So those are some examples of some streets that have been updated and patched through this program.
All right.
And then the last one of the other streets is our pre-work for the following year CAP. This would be for our, doing our environmental assessments, our environmental records review, geotechnical explorations, and our full-circuit televising of the storm and sanitary sewer to help us identify where there are service laterals so we can fine tune our plans. So we have started including preparatory work for the next year's CAP, so we don't have to wait. You know, in the case of 2000, this year, you know, if we did not have money for the 19 CAP in 18, we would have to wait until early December to start doing all of this work. And we want to get plans out on the street to bid in January, so there's, it's just not feasible to do that work in that amount of time. So I think it was about two or three years ago, we started including this as a line item in the prior CAP so that we can get started on that. As you may recall, the environmental records review contract was awarded about four, five weeks ago. Geotechnical soil borings will be coming to you next week, as will close circuit televising. So those will all be coming to you next week to help us finish getting prepared for the 2019 CAP. Moving on into the stormwater section, the Geldwyn Outfall Reconstruction. This is something we had previously programmed, ended up needing to shift that money to another project, the detention basin up on Libby Nicolay to get that completed. This project is permitted already through all the state agencies and federal agencies, but this is getting a start on replacing a very old box culvert with parallel systems on each side of it to start, you know, making some more significant improvements in that string and watershed, which, you know, as you may recall, upstream of that is South Park. You know, the entire system from South Park to this outfall location is enclosed in a box culvert that has had some challenges over the years. So we're trying to start programming to do some replacements and upgrades of that system to try to provide some additional flood relief in those upper areas.
And the reconstruction occurs right by the, actually right over here by the Morgan Partners Development?
Correct, this actually goes through that site. We're working with them right now on getting the easement secured for this facility going through their site. East Parkway Avenue Detention Basin, East Parkway Avenue itself, Steve, when was that, 14, 15?
I believe that was a 14.
So we had reconstructed the street with, you know, the plan that we would be doing this project in the future. The decision at that time was made, we had an alternative to be able to provide, you know, oversized storm sewer in Parkway Avenue. It would have been a large box culvert construction in Parkway Avenue to provide storage. Unfortunately, the narrow right of way width and all the other utilities in Parkway Avenue, plus the size of the system that we would have needed to install, would have created a lot of problems for not only the rest of our utilities, but also, you know, other utilities like Wisconsin Public Service, AT&amp;T, Time Warner. So we've been working with the Canadian National Railroad on acquiring a piece of property from them that is outside of the mainline track area. Let's see, it's, no, that's not the one. Here we go. So CN owns a piece of property outside of the mainline track area. So because it's outside of the mainline track area, it does not need to go through the DOT Rails, the Trails Program because they are still maintaining the actual corridor itself. So a storm sewer would come in off of Grand, which is programmed for a later year in the CAP. You know, philosophy similar, and the construction will be very similar to the Baldwin Avenue basin on the west side of the railroad tracks between Baldwin Avenue and New York Avenue. So construction will be very similar, but the storm sewer would come in from the west rather than the north as it does in Baldwin.
Would be digging the hole for the retention pond now, and then when would the storm sewer be coming into it do?
The initial connection to get out to Grand will be done as a part of the project, but the connection that where it actually gets water is 2020, so another year out. So that gives us a year to get the detention basin stabilized and grass growing so that, you know, if, you know, like with Baldwin, we had an unfortunate situation there where they just planted everything and then we got a major rain event and it washed everything out and they had to redo a lot of work. So this would give us an opportunity to get this stabilized a little better before actual flows are coming into it.
Just a question, James. So when we say here that the analysis of the storm sewer system on East Parkway showed an unacceptable level of flooding throughout the storm sewer system, are we saying across the city, are we saying in East Parkway area?
That would be in the East Parkway Avenue watershed because as we do storm sewer analyses and stormwater analyses, they are broken down watershed by watershed. We don't really do a citywide look at capacity analysis. The model would get.
So what is an unacceptable level of flooding then in that area?
In many cases in this area, flooding was over the top of the center line and in excess of a foot in the curb, in the curb and gutter line. So, you know, for most cars, the street would be impassable.
And that was like a one-time thing?
No, that was.
No, I live in that area, it's more one time.
Yeah, that happens fairly frequently. I think, I don't remember the exact modeling results on that one, but even in, I think, a 25-year design storm event, which is 4% probability.
What's it at that level?
Yeah, it was, the center line may have been passable, but I don't believe it was. And, you know, in the 1%, the 100-year design storm was even worse. You know, so this was an opportunity where we could, you know, work with some vacant land and in this case, the, you know, initially, the Canadian National was very accept, very receptive to us. I think, you know, Steve and I had the initial phone conversation with them, you know, thinking we get, you know, might get a, you're crazy, get lost. And they were like, oh, okay, just get us some information and we'll keep working on this and get it going. We're like, oh, okay. So, yeah, it's, it's drug out a little bit longer, I think, than we initially hoped. But I think, you know, we're getting to the point with them, they've actually got 90% plans in for their review and approval so that, you know, they needed to get to that step before the land transfer could continue.
And just so, there will be the necessity to acquire one property, butting it, butting the detention basin between Grand and Broad in order to get the sizable inlet pipe into the detention basin without running the risk of flooding any of the adjacent properties there.
Which property?
But we thought we'd be able to get in the area between a couple of the houses upon continuing the H&amp;H analysis for that. It showed we would likely be putting the stormwater in that basement of the adjacent house, so.
Oh, you don't think they'd like that too much?
We've learned people don't like their houses to become our detention basins. That came from, that came from a resident.
What's the address on that acquisition?
I don't know the address and I'm not sure that we're 100% on which parcel we need to acquire yet at this point in time.
We're still evaluating those alternatives. Certainly, once we have it narrowed down, it will come back to you.
Thanks.
Didn't want it to be a surprise.
Thank you, Steve. Wetland mitigation, bank development, you know, that project is moving a little bit slowly right now. So I think at this time, see, Major, we've included it, but we, it may be planned on holding off on the funding on that one, is that correct?
Yeah, it's really going to depend on when some other.
We've got some meetings, we've got some meetings coming up and it might get coupled with some projects that we're dealing with from a phosphorus standpoint. So right now, in your funding analysis, that project is not, it's included in the plan, but it's not planned to be borrowed for initially until we get further in the project. But we want you to be aware that that is still a project. We're looking at some things in conjunction with community development.
Do we have any sense of what the service area would include? Is that, is that being discussed yet or you've that far along in it?
What do you mean, the service area?
So typically with the wetland mitigation bank, there's a service area that's defined?
It's defined on the, generally, it's, the agencies look at a certain size of watershed and, you know, they want you to first look, they start with a certain size watershed and then if there's nothing in that area, they'll go out a little bit further. You know, part of the reason we've slowed down a little bit in our analysis is the Army Corps of Engineers has come back and said, well, you know, even though you do this and it, you know, it might be in that level of watershed that you need, if somebody does one closer, we may not let you use your own. So that's been one of the things that's kind of, you know, given us some pause to slow down and, you know, keep a, keep a little closer eye on things. I don't remember the exact, the HUC code, the Hydrologic Unit Code, that they generally look at for those. But certainly where we have been looking, you know, would be within an area that would be allowed to serve us.
Is there any just further discussion going on about the alternative for more onsite compensatory mitigation?
The agent.
Keep it local?
The agencies generally are against permittee responsible mitigation onsite because those are generally small practices and the likelihood of success is very low versus a larger site that is typically better managed. So when you work with the agencies as far as, you know, kind of their order of how you would potentially compensate for losses, you know, permittee responsible onsite is at the very bottom of the list, if not sometimes left off the list.
Doesn't that end up transferring the benefit of the wetland more to typically rural? I think the average is like 10 miles or something if you look nationwide. Doesn't that end up like transferring the, yeah, the benefit of that wetland more to rural areas? Whereas if those wetlands were maintained in the urban environment, it gives more of the benefit to that proximal radius?
Certain, certain wetlands and depending on the classifications of them, you know, offer a lot more benefit than others in the areas. Yes, generally speaking, you are going to see mitigation banks are generally not immediately located within a community. They're located a little further out in the rural areas, as you put it. But again, it's going through the process of avoid, minimize, mitigate. You know, if you did have a wetland that was of a significant quality, you probably would not get through the avoid, minimize to get to a mitigate. The agencies would make you retain that wetland and retain flow to that wetland.
And I guess the reason I'm asking is considering our other issues that we're looking at in terms of the TMDL and the phosphorus, if those were kept more local and more in the urban center area where they currently exist, wouldn't that help us with those requirements that are coming down the road?
Not necessarily because untreated kind of dirty stormwater runoff could not be discharged directly to a wetland without being treated to get that removal of sediment and phosphorus. So, you know, runoff from developments need to be treated before they can be discharged to waters of the state and a wetland is considered a water of the state. So, you know, maybe runoff from, you know, a grassed area that, you know, shouldn't be getting fertilized but may be getting fertilized, that you may get some benefits there. But, you know, from the actual treatment of runoff from impervious surfaces, the way the rules are set up is you have to actually treat that before you could discharge it to waters of the state. You know, so in cases of urban wetlands where the agencies are requiring you to maintain those wetlands, you actually have to go through a treatment process before you can put water into those wetlands.
Except in the situation where it permeates the permeable area. So if we had less impervious space.
In the sake of time, should we stay on the budget and not discuss strategic planning with water?
It's a significant, it's $1.4 million that we're talking about in the CAP, so I think it's relevant. But I'm okay with moving on.
Universal Court Storm Sewer Extension. For whatever reason, when the business park developed, there was a stretch of storm sewer that wasn't constructed and right now, the storm sewer kind of gets to a manhole and bubbles up to grade and slowly dissipates over ground. So we need to get that connected back into the system so that area drains better. You know, there's, there's an area out there that does not drain, drain well.
It's impacted the ability to be able to sell that lot.
And develop that lot, yes.
Just to ask a stupid question, why was it never completed?
I can't find anything in the, in the records at this point that would indicate why that didn't happen. Nearest I can tell, there was a plan for an easement to be granted that never got granted. And I think, you know, it slipped through the cracks after that easement didn't get granted.
I think it predates, predates all of us, so we don't necessarily know the history of that.
We ran out of money, Tom.
Or at Oshkosh, being Oshkosh, we got cheap.
Yeah, well, that could be true.
We briefly mentioned a little bit earlier, the Glats, Gallops, and Johnsons study. You know, this is looking at some alternative practices that we may be able to do along the waterways and doing some more analysis of that to maybe, you know, not have to do the more traditional practices. Kentucky Street Storm Sewer.
These are just, all these studies are getting out right to different businesses. Or we use one company, like AECOM again?
No, a lot of these stormwater studies, we have a handful of firms that we work with on a lot of our stormwater stuff. It's, it's not generally just one. We've had, AECOM has done some work, Brown and Caldwell's done some work, Strand has done some work, McMahon has done some work. So there've been a number of firms that have done a lot of work with the stormwater utility.
Good, good to hear.
The Kentucky Street Storm Sewer, there's a stretch of Kentucky Street that does not have any storm sewer right now that, you know, there's some adjacent property owners that need a lateral connection to be able to discharge runoff. In this case, it's the school district being able to discharge runoff from a parking lot. So in a case like that, you know, we, you know, on the utility, we get that storm sewer installed so they have a lateral connection. The cost of laterals that would be installed, not only for the school district, but any properties we go past to get the storm sewer installed would be assessed per our special assessment policy.
So, Mr. Abbey, then, it's my understanding that Merrill School has significant multimillion-dollar repairs that may be needed. I guess my question would be if we invested this, and obviously, they've purchased these parking lots that need to be attended to for the stormwater. But if for some reason that was the. But if for some reason that was decided against by the school district, would we have invested in this and only ended up like adding a few laterals? And I guess the, the second part of that question is, um, when we say that there's no safe method for managing stormwater, so, um, kind of a innocent question here, do swales not have some of those stormwater mitigation or?
Yeah, they're, they're, but they still have to be able to discharge somewhere. And you can't, without a lateral, you can't get it discharged into the right of way because it would flow across the sidewalk. And, you know, in wintertime, you get icing on the public sidewalk, which is a public hazard. And we're routinely called to come out and inspect and that's when our, then our sidewalk and ice removal contractor's got to go out and do that if the property owner doesn't. So the safe part of that is getting it safely discharged from the site to the right of way without causing, um, you know, public health and safety issues. So, yes, there, there are ways they can manage their stormwater, but they still need to be able to discharge it to our system in a safe manner.
So I'm not referring to the lateral piece of this because that no safe method for managing the stormwater was in reference to the parking lots that they, it says, "The school district wishes to construct two improved off-street parking lots on Kentucky Street, but cannot because there's no safe method."
It's the dis, it's the, it's the discharge. It's not just the management. It's the discharge to the system that's not safe. So we need to get a point for them to be able to discharge too safely that doesn't cause a public health and safety hazard.
So swales don't accomplish that?
No, because you still have to be able to discharge them and, you know, that's where the problem, you know, just flowing over the sidewalk or flowing out the driveway apron causes problems. That's not safe. They, they still need a lateral connection to be able to drain those because.
From the parking lots?
Yes. Unfortunately, our soils are not conducive to getting everything running into the ground. So we, we got to get them a connection point. Uh, mini storm, you know, the, the Kentucky system is really nothing more than a glorified mini storm. Uh, but because of the size and magnitude of it, it's included as its own project. Otherwise, you know, you can see it would chew up a rather significant portion of our annual mini storm budget, which, um, a lot of our residents do utilize. And we've got a, a pretty significant line of requests in right now, I do believe, right, Steve?
I believe we are completely open next year to, yeah, taking for twenty twenty.
Okay. So any further questions? Otherwise, we'll roll into the water utility. Uh, first project, Sheridan Mitchell Crane Plymouth. Uh, this is kind of a continuation of projects from two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen, uh, replacing several water mains that have had a notorious history of water main breaks. So we're trying to finish, uh, replacing some of these, uh, for whatever reason, these, these mains just did not hold up. Uh, several of them were installed in a period of time where we, we know there were some issues with ductile iron main. Um, the project this year on Roosevelt, Columbia and Minerva was actually the first project here in the city where we utilized PVC water mains. Uh, we did not have an issue with contamination in those areas, so we're able to utilize PVC on that project. Uh, depending on how the environmental research comes in, I could see this being another project that that would be a, a potential option for. Uh, West Haven, Northwest Haven Drive and Amro Road, that's closing a loop now that everything in that area attached into the city per the Zone B agreement with the town of Algoma. Uh, we need to close that loop with the water main to be able to, uh, you know, provide a better flow and be able to provide service for those properties that just came into the city. And then utility owned lead service line replacements. Um, you know, we, we've, we've talked a bit at, at the workshop about the, uh, the private side LSLR program. Um, this, you know, this is a funding source for us to be able to continue to replace our utility side ones. Um, for example, in the area, um, Pinocu Graham, that area with the sanitary sewer project, rather than, uh, our staff at Water Distribution replacing those public side led services, uh, we hired the contractor out there and did it as a part of the contract. And this was the funding source that allowed us to do that. All right, if there's, sorry, did you have something, Treeany, you want to add?
Sure. Uh, as we move on to the wastewater, I'm wondering if it might be helpful if we look for projects that the council might have questions on? And if they didn't have questions, we advance into the next section. Would the council be okay with that?
Sure.
Okay.
Seems unanimous.
So then that would start us on page eighteen for the wastewater utility. Would the council have any questions for Mr. Robbie in regards to those pages?
Yeah, I got one, um, inflow and infiltration. We've talked about this numerous times, I think. And I'm trying to, trying to balance, we're trying to figure out, how do we know that this is a, a good use of one point five million dollars? How do we know that there's a return on, on this investment? Because it's a continual investment we've made over the last eight, ten years. But yet, our infiltration numbers are basically when our, when we have a peak stormfall or stormwater event, those peaks are still way up there, still a hundred million, um, hundred million gallon flows per day. I know they dissipate relatively quickly or quicker than they had been before. How do we attribute that to fixing our manholes and fixing that infiltration? How do I find that?
Some of the big things that we've seen, um, you know, are typical spring rainfalls. We used to see that hundred million gallon peak in our typical, you know, inch or two in the spring. We're seeing forty, fifty, maybe sixty now. So we are seeing, uh, uh, some very significant drops in that. And as you mentioned, the rebound is much quicker. You know, it used to take three, four days to get back down to normal. Now we're seeing it in a day and a half to two days in many cases. Yes, significant rainfall events, you know, like we had in August and September. Uh, we do still occasionally see those peaks up to a hundred million, especially once the ground gets completely saturated and every bit of rainfall runs off. So we do still see some impacts there. Uh, a lot of that, um, can be contributed to a lot of old infrastructure. Um, as we've looked at the historical records in engineering, you know, homes that were built in the, uh, late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds, their sanitary lateral went to the house and it literally had a T that picked up the foundation drain, a T that went to the backyard for a catch basin. Oh, and by the way, it also picked up the plumbing in the house. So there are a lot of those foundation drains that are still directly connected to the sanitary sewer system. Um, and that's a part of the program that we have not gotten into yet. But we need to continue to evaluate some policy decisions that need to be made on that front. But as far as our public infrastructure side goes, we have seen some significant drops. And I am working on trying to, you know, kind of break down some of that data a little bit more and maybe get something written up a little bit better to, to try to show some of those things. As you're right, that August rainfall event where we got, you know, two inches in an hour, we did see that peak. But the spring, you know, inch or two rainfall events, um, we've seen significant reductions in the flows coming to the plant.
Okay, so there are no further questions. We can move on to page twenty, which is our program of which we administer our sidewalk program. This is a program that rotates throughout the city in a ten-year cycle, which does focus on, uh, replacing any faulty or failing sidewalks. Are there any questions in regards to sidewalks?
I have one. Um, how much of the eight hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred for sidewalk is attributed to, because this, this is also for fixing deteriorated driveway aprons? I guess is there just kind of a rough idea?
Oh, I don't know that we've done a breakdown to see how much is sidewalk related versus driveway apron related. Um, we did not used to include driveway aprons, unfortunately, you know, there was a lawsuit in which we did not win. So now we replace the driveway aprons as well, so we can avoid another one of those. But unfortunately, we have not done that level of analysis at this point. We, and we might be able to get it just on a breakdown from bid quantities. We, we might be able to get it to a ballpark estimate just based off of the bid, uh, the bid breakdown. So that's something we can look at doing.
You'll provide that to Deputy Mayor?
Uh, we'll provide it to everybody, yeah.
Okay. So that brings us next into the public property improvements. On page thirty-two, and that would lead us into the Keenest Polis Quarry. Um, does the council have any questions in regards to that project? I did want to notate for the council one item that did come up in our budget discussion with our Transportation Director, Jim Collins. This project is, in regards to the parking lot, is coming in at the seven hundred and eighteen thousand. So we will need to increase the budget. However, we do have available, um, budget from the two thousand and eighteen projects, which can carry forward, so it will not require additional borrowing. But we will increase that line item to reflect the total cost of the project and then also apply those two thousand and eighteen funds carried forward.
Just a question for, for you, Ms. Larson. So when we do this parking lot, because it's for the convention center and in conjunction with the hotel, does any of our hotel room tax go towards this at all or no?
No, it, it doesn't. This is, this is not the garage adjacent to the hotel. This is the one, uh, adjacent to the fire station, actually, just to the west of the fire station.
Oh, okay, all right.
North side of the CP.
Not the ramp, nevermind, okay.
We have a separate fund for that, though. The one, the one you were asking about, yeah, we do have a separate,
Okay.
uh, assessment on each, uh, each hotel night at the, uh, at the Best Western.
So that would step us into the public property improvements for the utility, starting on page thirty-five. Uh, does the council have any question in regards to this section?
These are all for the utility. Probably the biggest one, and, and maybe James can give a status report on it, is the Clearwell Project and where we are with that.
Yeah, the Clearwell Project is, is just slid from, uh, from eighteen into nineteen. Um, the Public Service Commission during the construction authorization phase has come back and asked for some additional information that, uh, they didn't used to ask for. Um, so we are working on, we got to, had executed a contract to be able to do some very detailed the, the demand level studies that they're looking for and that work is underway. Uh, we are hopeful to be able to complete that work by the end of this calendar year to be able to submit that information, uh, back to the Public Service Commission so that, um, the project, uh, we can look at continuing forward. Uh, one item I do want to point out, this is planned for, uh, Safe Drinking Water Loan Program. So this would not be a revenue bonded money. Uh, the way the Safe Drinking Water Loan Program works is, um, we, we pay the contractor and we file for reimbursements and we make interest only payments until the project reaches, uh, substantial completion. And then they set up a, a principal and interest payment schedule. And the overall length of this project is probably going to be about two and a half years. So it is not the typical, okay, we, we borrow the money on revenue bonds and start making principal interest payments right away. The Safe Drinking Water Loan Program, you know, they, they, they fund us upfront and we make some interest only payments until the job's done and then we start repaying it. So it's, it's a, a little bit backwards of, of the way we normally think of doing the projects, uh, at, at the city because we normally are borrowing for them through bonds.
Okay, so that would then step us into our last, last section, which is major equipment, beginning on page thirty-nine and going through page forty. This, we would be covering tonight the, specifically the utility major equipment.
That's water, anything, water filtration, wastewater are the, are the two areas here. Obviously, the water filtration plant emergency generator is the biggest project there.
And that project will be done in conjunction with the Clearwell Project. Uh, because of the, the electrical load change with introducing another level of pumping on the Clearwells, um, it, it's just prudent to do those projects together.
James, the plant on, near the lake, near the lake, when was that built? Was it about twenty years ago?
Uh, the current water filtration plant, yeah, that was, uh.
Nineteen ninety-five.
Yeah, went on, uh, December nineteen ninety-nine.
About twenty years, yes.
Thank you. One more question.
And that's, that's the lion's share of the major equipment with the utilities. The other ones are really just updates over at the treatment plant.
Uh, one question I would like to respond to from our, our operating budget workshop. Uh, there was a question as we move, as we look at vehicles regarding the Engineering Division Pickup Truck. We have talked about that, uh, and we do think we can make a change on that to a half ton pickup, which reduce the cost by about five or six thousand dollars.
Thank you.
We had some conversations with, uh, amongst ourselves in Central Garage afterwards and, uh, so we will be looking at making that adjustment as well.
Every little bit helps. And those items we did talk about in the last meeting, that's why, and that question popped up.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that pretty much covers all of the public works capital improvements. At this point, we were, the plan was to, uh, welcome the Long Range Finance Committee. We can probably move around and get, squeeze them in. I think we have five members that are with us tonight. Talk about their recommendation, uh, regarding potential, uh, institution of a vehicle registration fee or special assessment relief. So, uh, I'm not sure, Mr. Peck, you're the Chair of the Committee. I'm not sure how you wanted to necessarily, uh, talk about this. There is, in your packet tonight, there is information that staff had prepared. Um, and maybe the best thing to do is just, uh, just kind of walk through that with everybody. There's, there's a page, uh, some facts that Ms. Larson put together on the vehicle registration fee. And at the bottom of the page is the summary of the Long Range Finance Committee's motion. Just a clarification, a Long Range Finance Committee's recommendation at the bottom bullet assumes a thirty dollar, vehicle registration fee. And that's based on staff's analysis of what it's cost us to fund those, uh, those RES one and RES two properties. And RES one and RES two were defined at the bottom of that fact list. The other pages are pages that we provided the, uh, Long Range Finance Committee in advance of their discussion. Um, we basically gave them four possible approaches. And I would say probably more general approaches because the committee ended up taking kind of a hybrid approach to it. And that's why they're here. They're here to explain how they morphed, uh, four different approaches into, uh, into one that they recommended, uh, to the council. And that basically takes care of three pages there. And then, uh, the next page is just the history of how much we've been spending on special assessments. Uh, you, you may recall that we borrow for those special assessments and then the resident or the property owners pay them back to us. And you can see that it varies widely from year to year because it depends on the nature of the street. Uh, the mayor likes to talk about when his street was done, very residential last year. Um, that, that's one example. Oregon, this street, very commercial. So they can vary depending on that. So what Ms. Larson did was, uh, a five-year look back as well as a look forward with twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. Basically, the purpose of this is just to show you that the thirty dollars that, uh, the committee is recommending would be sufficient to cover this amount because, uh, we estimate that a thirty dollar fee would generate about one point five million dollars annually. And, uh, the average for residential, when we've done a variety of different averages, is, uh, hovers around a million or a little bit over that. So the million five would be sufficient to cover the ebbs and flows that would normally happen with, uh, street projects. And that, that's, that's the pages in this package that you received tonight that are devoted to long range finance. With that, I guess I'll turn over to Chairman Peck and the members of the committee who, uh, who wrestled with this for many meetings.
Can I just ask Mr. Robbie on that exhibit you just showed and, and talked about? And I thought I heard you saying the discussion on the budget, um, as far as street miles that we take on in every capital budget. It's a linear mile. It has nothing to do with the width of the street, correct?
Yes, so, you know, and costs certainly vary significantly by the width of the street. So, you know, um, take two thousand seventeen when we did Bay Shore.
But not how much we do linearly.
Well, it, it does because, um, you know, the capital improvement program for several years has had a cap of three point eight million, uh, related to street reconstruction projects. So if we're doing a street like Bay Shore where it's being reconstructed at twenty-eight feet versus a street like Oregon Street being reconstructed at forty-four feet, um, you know, that, those dollars don't go nearly as far, you know. You can buy maybe about the same square footage, but when you're, you know, the street's twice as wide, you do half the length.
All right, well, um, yeah, Mr. Rolloff is correct. We did have several meetings and there were some very, very good discussions. Very good discussions. Um, the Long Range Finance Committee did come forward with a recommendation, uh, on. The Long Range Finance Committee did come forward with a recommendation on a vote of six, zero, and one present to recommend the implementation of a thirty-dollar vehicle registration fee to basically cover special assessments as, for the Res. One and Res. Two properties as defined by the special assessment policy. As noted, those are basically, you know, your, your one or two dwelling units. And then also, they, you know, would also affect any properties with more than two dwelling units. So the large-scale, large apartment buildings would fall under this. And, you know, the question is, is that, is that, you know, one of the things we always talk about that we hear from our community is our streets. We need to take care of our streets. The resolution, the, the recommendation as coming forward to the council does nothing, does nothing to extend the amount of, to Harold's question here, it does nothing to put more streets in. It simply changes how the streets, the, the streets that we're improving get paid for. Furthermore, they, we also, there's no, there's nothing related towards, for commercial properties. Large-scale apartments and large-scale, and dwelling units such as that are really, yes, they are quote residential, but they're also more commercial because they do generate, they, they, they're a business. So I was the one that voted present because I don't believe that as it's, as it's brought forward, it, it doesn't. For, the biggest reason is because it doesn't do anything to leverage additional street projects, which is what are, which is one of the things that our citizens consistently say, they want us to do more streets. So with that, I will open it up to any members of the Long Range Finance Committee to throw in their two cents to kind of, you know, explain where they were, where they're coming from, and we can go from there. And then also, if there's any council members that have any comments.
Yeah, I got a question right away. One-point-five million is what it's estimated we're going to get. How much are you banking every year? Are you banking any money or are you spending it all?
Depends on the quality of the streets.
Well, again, it's, he said we're not adding to our street program, we're just going to stay current. So if you spend all the money, you spend all the money every year and not grow it like a bank account, you're not going to eliminate special assessments eventually, if that's your goal. If that's your goal. I mean, I think you got to say, we're going to spend five-hundred thousand year one, year two, year three. Then maybe we can, we'll have money built up in year four, five, and six. We can have a little more money and not assess as much. But if you're just going to keep spending the money every year.
That's not, that's up to you. That's up to you.
I, I think one, if you can flip to the, the table with the historical and the, kind of the look ahead, you can see that fluctuation in, in the residential. And certainly sixteen and seventeen were big years. But then eighteen, you know, as City Manager pointed out, you know, Oregon's not a residential street primarily, so that's where the ups and downs went.
That's what I'm saying, so if you, you know, I think you gotta, you gotta phase this, this in. You start small and work your way up. You don't spend all your money upfront and hope that ten years from now you'll have maybe a million left. I think you gotta build it up like a bank account. And I think you pick up smaller projects first, like maybe sidewalks that people hate to pay for, that a lot of people use. Or you cover the cold mix asphalt program that covers a lot of those smaller streets and homes that aren't, you know, is as expensive. And then you work your way to more assessments. But I think you got to build it up as a bank account if we're going to do anything. And it says right in here, we got to, you're starting at thirty bucks, so you're starting on the high end. That's the highest that any city in the state's got. And it says you're just going to have to update the fees, so every few years you're going to have to increase it. Is there a sunshine clause of how long you can keep increasing it? Is it going to be a hundred dollars ten years from now?
I think as Ms. Paulin said, somebody that's going to be up to the council that.
Yeah, but I, yeah, but you guys are the ones making recommendations, and we go ahead and do it, and then you want us to do the policy.
You know, one of, it's a little confusing. Is one, one of the other issues is, you know, one of the things that is, is that we hear is, is that, is from that, why should I, why should I pay for the assessment to my street when it's there for everyone else to use? True, but you use that street, the resident uses that street more than the aver, than ordinary citizen in Oshkosh does. There may be some citizens that never drive down that street, but that resident is on that street every day multiple times a day. So if we are talking about doing something on special assessments, why don't we? Because there is a benefit, that homeowner is receiving a benefit of increased value to their home. They are getting a newer street, they are getting their street replaced, they are getting the, the utilities. Then why don't we, is what I would, what I would entertain is, one of the thoughts was to fund a portion of the special assessment.
I'd just like to ask, you know, I, I'm going to agree with Councilmember Peck. I'm not too keen on the idea of doing R. Two, including R. Two in there for the simple reason that it is, those are commercial activities. While it is, as you pointed out, residential as well. I could see the churches, schools, and other institutional uses being included. But, but I'm not sure, maybe somebody from Long Range Finance that voted for that recommendation could explain why you would include those commercial, larger apartment complexes in the special assessment.
Well, I think it's because, it is because it was, it, it's basically with what is defined in the special assessment policy. Is those are, those, those are defined in a special assessment policy of what falls under Res. One, Res. Two. Council could, I'm sure, address the special assessment policy to, you know, could, could look at that to address those issues. Because I can imagine, I'm sure that those, those, those businesses that would get that, that would have their special assessment waived. I'm sure that, that after the special assessment is, is, after the street is improved and everything, I'm sure that there would be some way to pass along some type of a cost increase under the guise of having to pay. We had, you know, that, that, oh, we, we had to, you know, cover this, so, but.
But wouldn't that be one way in which we could extend the number of miles that are being done if we limited it to R. One?
Certainly, it would be, you know, looking back at the, the historical table. You know, you can see the breakdown in the mix between R. One and R. Two. You know, some years it's significantly more one, some years another. But, you know, certainly, if, you know, doing one category versus the other, you know, you could extend your streets because you are, you know, basically reimbursing less or paying for less.
And it also depends on what you set the fee at, because thirty dollars, I believe it was set within mind that it'd be sufficient to cover the Res. One and Res. Two. If you only wanted to do Res. One, you might not set the fee as high. Or if you did, then you could say, all right, we're still going to collect a million and a half, give or take, every year. What more do you want to do?
Then we might include sidewalks as an equity issue as far as transportation.
Yeah, the other issue is, is that, is that, again, getting back to not bringing commercial in, plumbers, heating and ventilating, delivery, you know, companies that have delivery vans. They will have vehicles that are registered in the city of Oshkosh. They will be paying a vehicle registration fee, but getting no benefit for it related to their assessment. Think about it. You, you have, you have, like I say, a plumber, we have plumbers' vans. We have, you know, those types of businesses would be paying vehicle registration fees, but still ending up getting a special assessment.
A couple of comments. You know, as long as I've been on council, Steve, Deb, Tom, we've heard nothing about the conditions of the streets in the city of Oshkosh. We're paying for past years of not doing a whole lot. There's nothing in here that shows me that we can accelerate street reconstruction to satisfy the citizens of Oshkosh. The other thing is, I don't understand why rental properties are not part of this. They're a business. It's not a home, it's not a charity, they're, they are a business. And the, the third thing that I really find phenomenally disturbing, we have talked over and over about the property taxes in the state of Wisconsin, and the homeowner is bearing the brunt of everything. And here we are basically asking the homeowner to ante up more money. I mean, we've talked, we've got to change the whole taxing system in the state, and this is just adding one more burden on the homeowner.
Yeah, I mean, I, I do want to speak to that a little bit because, I mean, homeowner right now, i- it's, it's not equitable right now. There's a homeowner who paid twenty, who's paying nineteen thousand dollars, not getting nineteen thousand dollars worth of benefit out of that. At least with this, there is at least some equitable distribution of that, of that financial distribution. All of us drive, we're using the roads, they're not getting, you know, a homeowner isn't getting nineteen thousand dollars out of benefit in their, in their property. It's, they're not going to be able to sell the property for nineteen thousand dollars more, it's not the case. This is a way to allow citizens who are getting hit, you know, in their first three months here with a twenty-thousand-dollar fee or something like that, to at least distribute it amongst folks who are actually using the roads and things of that nature. I mean, if you talk about fairness, you could have people who never use a road. I could be completely green, let's just say that way. I don't drive, I own a home, I'm going to be paying for that road. Where's my benefit out of that? So I, I don't want to get too much into that piece of it because I think the, a concern here, in addition to making sure we cover what we have to for roads, is that we have citizens who are subsidizing our driving right now unfairly. There's just no doubt about that. And I don't, I don't think you're going to be able to get rid of that unfairness to plumbers or whomever. But to me, the biggest issue is that we have a very, very tiny, tiny proportion of people who are subsidizing the roads and the road costs for everybody in Oshkosh.
If I could just add to Mr. Mayor, that you're getting at the kind of statute limitation of the vehicle registration fee, not being able to charge vehicles over eight thousand pound, or eight thousand pounds, it is, right?
Yep.
You know, those commercial vehicles obviously produce more wear and tear on the roads, but we can't charge them the fee. We're, we're limited by state statute, so I, I think that's where you're going with it.
And those get charged something else somewhere.
No, they don't.
In the process. Not in the city, but as a commercial vehicle, if they're older, over that, doesn't DOT have some kind of additional?
The vehicle, the vehicle registration fee structure is a bit of a sliding structure. You know, as you start getting into trucks, you know, even light-duty trucks, you know, if it's, you know, there's three or four different weight scales, you know. For, for example, you know, I, I drive a half-ton pickup truck, you know, I'm licensed at a Class B, I have a Class B license on my, you know, tag. You know, that means I'm paying eighty-four dollars right now. If I had a one-ton pickup truck, you know, a Class C, you know, I believe that fee is ninety to a hundred dollars. So there is a bit of a sliding scale in there right now.
Do, do we get any benefit from that, from that fee?
No, DOT gets it.
They ate it up.
It's, it's, the only benefit we get is, you know, a part of our general transportation needs are coming back that way, but that's up and down.
We could give a long formula and a long explanation, but I think once somebody down here said no, I think that's probably the answer.
That's the best answer we could give, I think.
So, so let's just take, take the Oregon Street project. It's nine million, seven-hundred-seventy-two thousand dollars with the vehicle registration fee. The homeowner would not be charged for the street, correct? Because they're still going to be charged for utilities, right?
Because utility improvements, yes.
So, so for this street.
Only service la, no, only service laterals.
The assessment, so the street portion of the assessment would not be assessed, correct? But this homeowner would still have to pay, the homeowners would have to pay that sixty-six, eight-hundred for storm, right? They would still have to pay two-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand, three-hundred for the wastewater. They'd be assessed for that, they'd be assessed for water at sixty-four-hundred, and then they'd be paying for their sidewalk, nine, ninety thousand, four-hundred. So out of a million and one in assessments, homeowner gets the benefit of the street only, correct? Under the current proposal.
For this very large, intensive project, yes.
Right, I'm just trying to break it down so that, so that the citizens realize that they're still going to be paying through their water bill for storm, wastewater, water.
Well, it's, that special assessment won't be coming on your water bill. That's, you know, handled the same, same way as any of the other special assessments.
Isn't that a utility, though?
The utilities pay for the main line, but service laterals are special assessed in accordance with the special assessment policy. You know, so those costs that you're, you're looking at there, like the storm sewer cost, you know, that is the aggregated cost that all of the property owners would pay for storm sewer laterals to be installed to their properties. The wastewater costs that you're referring to there, that is an aggregated cost to relay sanitary laterals or install new sanitary laterals, maybe vacant lots that don't have them. So that, that's a project cost that is special assessed back through the special assessment policy. The sidewalk reference there is, you know, any sidewalk squares that need to be rehabilitated because they don't meet the requirements from the sidewalk rehab program. So again, that comes back, you know, through the special assessment policy. So the only, if you look at, you know, the special assessment tables that go out with all the hearings, there's a street cost, and there's a driveway apron cost, there's a sidewalk rehab cost, there's a sanitary lateral cost, there's a storm lateral cost. If they're getting a new water service, it's, there's a water lateral cost. The current proposal would just be for the street portion of that.
Right, that's what he's getting at, because that's what it says here.
Wasn't, didn't the Long Range Finance also discuss, at least at the first of those two meetings, I believe someone mentioned, the possibility of going even to forty as that VRF fee, which would then be able to offset or reduce or defray some of these other pieces?
Forty would have, forty would have addressed all special assessments.
You, you.
All road work, all road work, yeah.
You cannot use the VRF to replace the utility.
Right, we can't do that because it's not transportation, but sidewalk certainly arguably is transportation, that could be.
That wasn't included in the motion, the original motion.
I understand, I just was clarifying that that was discussed as an option.
So, and I'd like to chime in on this, because this is, this is really coming from my recommendation or my request to start talking about this again. This, the sole purpose of this was to reduce the heavy financial burden on the property owners that are getting hit with massive special assessments for roadwork, period. It was not to try to increase the amount of roads or miles that we could do in a given year, or to, to take over the sidewalk portion or the sidewalk plan, or to, to break down our, our road policy, our road improvement plans where the cold mix and the hot mix and, and those things. It was to reduce or actually remove the huge financial burden that property owners are seeing. Oregon Street, when you have a residential property owner who's going to have a ten-to-twelve-thousand-dollar assessment for Oregon Street, and they get a response from a council member that says, when they have, when they're voicing their concerns about how they're going to pay that, and they're just told to take out a loan, that's not acceptable, that we expect our, our citizens to take out a car loan, basically. That's, we're talking a student loan payment, a car loan payment, a massive increase to a mortgage payment. That's the, the purpose behind this, to reduce that, that burden that they're feeling. The gentleman that spoke this evening spoke at, Mr. Smith, I think it is, on, on Oshkosh Ave. I couldn't have said it better. He's who I'm trying to do this for. He's who I'm trying to help out by reducing the huge impact that that had on, on him and his family for the next fifteen years, period. The original motion that I brought to the floor was a forty-dollar wheel tax to completely eliminate all roadwork special assessments. It didn't have much traction within the Long Range Finance Committee, and I respect that. But there did seem to be a consensus, six-oh, with one abstaining, that supported a thirty-dollar fee to reduce the special assessments to homeowners.
There was no, there, it just for, to correct the record, to correct the record, there was no abstention.
Sorry, you were present. But with that said, it was, there was no intention to increase roadwork. Reason for that is, is it's twofold. If we want to, especially a. If we want to especially assess more to our, our property owners, they're going to pick up two thirds of it, the city's going to pick up another third, and I don't know where you're going to find that in our budget going forward, to pick up another third of any more miles of roadwork going forward. So if we want to do another mile, another two miles, we have to find funding on our side of it, in addition to the taxpayers' special assessments, too.
Well, thank you.
I can answer the long range, the extended roadwork recommendation or suggestion, but I want to, I think we should go back to, and maybe Ms. Larson can explain it better than I will, but I'll try. This, we're going to create a fund called the VRF, Vehicle Registration Fund, which is based on collecting thirty dollars from each registered vehicle in Oshkosh. And that, let's say you started, the council said, well, that's okay, let's start January one. So any vehicle registration that takes effect from that date on will now start creating the revenue stream of thirty dollars for that. Any current road repair assessments for 2018 would still have to pay their assessments, so we're not looking at draining already what's coming in at the first part of the revenue stream. But there will be, and I think Mr. and Ms. Larson and Mr. Roloff would agree, there will be times there will be volatility in this fund because of when the revenues come in from the registration and when the actual assessments occur, and then we have the cost to the city on that. Am I close to explaining how, at least the fund part, this is, we're going to have a fund?
As well as the volatility part, comparing Oregon Street is a great example. Right now, the 2018 part did very little residential. The 2019 will do a higher, a much higher percentage residential. So you're going to see a shift in commercial special assessments to residential special assessments in that two-year period, just by the payer mix on that, or the people who own property on that road.
So, so Ms. Pelmer, here's why I came in with the, there should be a long-term component. If you're going to go and ask your citizens to pay thirty dollars for vehicle registration fee, then there should be, and we're telling them that they're getting the benefit of assessment reductions, then there should be also the commitment to create, to repair more streets. It's in your citizen surveys every time you look at it, and so, we're called the Long Range Finance Committee, to me, it's very simple. If you're going to charge somebody thirty dollars, we don't know what it will be next year, we don't know what it'll be in five years from now, but there should be a component of that thirty dollars fee that says, look, somehow we're going to have some savings on just the way that we do assessments, there are some other things that we will save some money.
Staff time, administration.
And so, to ask someone to pay thirty dollars for the fee, and you're giving them a special assessment reductions when their streets will be repaired, and there's inequity in all that, I think the most prominent word we had all our discussions was inequity, because not, any one of those options created full equity for everyone. Some part of the citizenry will not be receiving the equitable amount that another part is getting. For instance, if I had my streets assessed this year, I wouldn't get any benefit other than paying thirty dollars.
So I just want to thank Councilmember Mugarauer for resurfacing this, because while you brought it up this year, I also brought it back last year, and there have been other council members who have, you know, brought in pieces and parts of this, and so it's good that we're having this discussion again. I mean, it does seem to have, I guess, more support from the long range finance, and we, you know, we've been kind of waiting for a little more detail, and this is a level of detail that I'm glad that we're seeing.
How many people at this table have more than one car?
Yeah.
All right, so, two cars, three cars, so now, it's not thirty dollars per household, that's sixty, or ninety. I still don't understand why rental properties are not included.
But they are.
Why, they're not?
Right here, right here.
No, no, I think, I think what the mayor is saying is, is why are rental properties receiving the benefit of the special, of the, because it strikes to the heart of, it, it, it strikes to the heart of Mr. Mugarauer's, of his issue, is he says he, he's out to protect the, the homeowner, but, I'm not, is, but the business owners, commercial properties, sorry, you're out.
And they already get double assessed because of our policy.
But, but there's, but a, but a carved-out business interest receives the benefit, and those, those businesses, the, the, do not fit the same, you know, are probably not, don't have the vehicles that a plumber, a heating company, a delivery vehicle, you know, a dry cleaner, a florist would have. So, you know, I think that this, it is, is, if we are going to do this, I would say that it, it needs to be residential, the homeowner.
R1.
R1.
Nothing more, nothing less. Or, if we are going to do a VRF, that it be instituted in a way that, that creates more streets, that takes, that we're able to do more and address the issues that were neglected over the years in the city of Oshkosh, because many, because many councils wanted to be cheap and not frugal.
So roughly, in 2017, so if you were to go that direction, R1 and not R2, if you look at 2017, there would have been potentially thirty percent more able to be done. In 2018, like ninety percent more could have been done if you eliminated R2, and half in 2019, the projection, half more, because it would only, if, if I'm understanding this correctly, if, if we limited it to R1, then that three hundred and twenty-seven thousand for 2019 could go for additional street reconstruction. Is that accurate?
We could pick R1 as, as our objective, but again, it just created another inequity, and that would be with R2, and we're, with, you know, so again, we dealt with those inequities, just as that one gentleman who said that he already had paid his assessment and thinking he's not going to get any benefit, maybe not for twenty-five, thirty years. Those were all the types of inequities that we looked at when we came forward with this proposal, what would be the least of the inequities suffered by the general citizenry? And it seemed to be that R1 and R2 was the suggestion. Could you pick R1? Sure you can. Can we do more miles with that? Yeah, you're absolutely correct.
The other point that we haven't talked about yet is, we are reducing the amount borrowed, because we're no longer borrowing for the residential portion of the special assessment. So, I mean, technically, just on that alone, if you wanted to include the amount that you would have borrowed and allocate that towards an additional mile or whatever, whatever that number comes out to be, you certainly could do that. That's, that would be, you know, between you and city staff, if, if you decide that you have, you know, a hundred thousand more dollars, or however many, a hundred thousand dollars, that you want to allocate in addition, you could do that, that's...
And we were also told that it would cut back on staff time, and Ms. Pelmer, I mentioned that, alluded to that, that it cut back on staff time, because that apparently...
Mr. Robb is the best person to comment on that.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, just doing just the street portion of it, you know, the benefit to staff time is, is very small, because we still have to do, you know, all the paperwork, all the forms, we still have, you know, we might not calculate quite as much for the street, but we still have to calculate the sanitary lateral, the sidewalk, the driveway apron.
It sounded like more.
And that's, as we've had time to think about it more from when we initially answered, answered that question, you know, I've kind of, we've had to think back on that a little more.
My office?
Yes, my office does have time invested in this. We would still have to do the public hearings for the utilities and such, so...
Right. So, so if, at this, so, would there be a savings? Yes, there would be a, an administrative savings. Is it this huge pile, is it hundreds of thousands of dollars? Probably not. Would you agree, James?
Yes, I would agree with that.
It could be forty, fifty, which is, is not, you know, again, you know, it's money that we're saving, but it's not...
Tom, as chairman of the long range, before you guys, did you look at anybody else, at any other policies? Did you look at Appletons? Did you look at other communities?
Yes.
Are, is, are you recommending, following theirs? There's no recommendation there to mirror someone else's? I don't see that here.
Is basically, is, is, is long range finance is simply a policy recommendation?
So, you're, in other words, you're saying, do it?
Basically, what they're saying is...
Do it, and let staff put it together and bring it back to council, we can pick and choose which way we want to go with it.
Basically, it's simply that they are recommending the institution of a thirty dollar vehicle registration fee to eliminate the, the road portion of special assessments for rez one and rez two properties.
I can chime in on that.
Wait, wait. So, the other piece of this that was not talked about tonight, but was talked about in long range finance, I believe, was the fact that you are bringing that fee in more or sooner, rather than when a special assessment goes out and someone decides to finance it over ten years, you are getting a trickle, long-term, you know, protracted, maybe you're going to get it in a few years, or maybe you'll get it that first year if somebody decides to take out a loan to pay it. But how many, how many did we determine, people or dollar amounts are we having to wait all these years to come in? It's about fifty percent. So about fifty percent of our citizens that get special assessments, fifty percent pay right away or on their first tax bill, and the other fifty percent defer out to the fifteen-year payment option.
And I haven't looked at the statute thirty, three forty-one, thirty-five, I will, but does it say in there, you can only assess residential one properties and residential two? Or is that our current policy of how we assess?
That's our policy. Three forty-one is exclusively to the, the vehicle registration fee.
So we could go beyond this and, and change our policy?
Oh, your policy is independent of the, the wheel tax legislation.
We can't.
What, what three forty-one, and, sorry, Tom, if I may...
No, no, go ahead.
What three forty-one, thirty-five talks about specifically is county and local municipality vehicle registration fees. Three forty-one in its totality is vehicle registration fees as a whole. So three forty-one, thirty-five specifies, you know, which vehicles are eligible and which vehicles are not eligible. You know, there's been a focus on, you know, vehicles over eight thousand pounds are ineligible, but there's, you know, a list of many other types of vehicles that are not eligible for vehicle registration fees, among them municipal and state-owned vehicles. You know, there's, I think motorcycles are on that list, you know, certain collector vehicles are on that list, so, you know, to under, to fully understand the list of eligible and ineligible, you know, we'd have to pull out that particular section.
What is the code number again referencing our special assessment policy? Does anybody have that, the municipal code?
Are you talking about the city code?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean...
Special assessment policy is right on the streets.
Yeah, the special assessment policy itself is not in the municipal code, it's been passed and updated through a series of resolutions over many, many years, and the policy itself is available right on the engineering page of Public Works.
Mr. Peck, can you explain the rationale be, behind not having special assessments for residential two, which is basically rental property, which is a business? What is the logic behind that?
By, that, that was, that was not my motion, so you would have to, I'd address that, I believe, it was Matt's motion, so I would address, I would...
He did say residential.
Which is rental, which is a business.
Not just rental, it's, so that's, that's where you get, I just want to make sure that that's clarified, because it's part of our special assessment descriptions, it considers rez two as anything more than three units, excuse me, three units and more, as well as, as it says in the footnotes, churches, schools, similarly-used, tax-exempt properties are also treated as rez two. So anything, anything non-commercial and non-manufacturing is basically considered a rez two under that.
That's correct.
Everything else other than commercial and industrial is rez two.
I can understand not assessing churches and schools and forth, so forth, I don't understand rental property. There's a lot of rental property in this city, a lot of it.
Right. I, I guess I go back, because I was one of the council members that brought it forward, well, five years ago, six years ago, and got hammered over the head on. There's just not enough information yet here to, I, I think we can go forward with it, if there's consensus in council, but we, I would want to see a policy, I would want to see what it specifically covers, you know? What is reduction? Because there's citizens that, you know, have paid, unfortunately, their assessments. I, I was one that had my street, both sides of my street done, I paid it upfront, you know? But besides that, I understand the gentleman's, and I do think there is a problem with some of our residential areas, where the home values aren't, aren't as much, and the incomes are, are being affected, and I don't want people to have to sell their houses because of their street assessments, but I just don't think there's enough information here without a kind of a draft policy that would come forward.
That could be, that could be brought forward to council at that time, though.
Right.
That would be a two-phase, there's really two things here, and we, this is supposed to be about vehicle registration fee, but you can't separate it from the fact that our special assessment policy is really the, is really the issue here, and that's why Green Bay and Appleton have both looked at it, so...
If I can chime in on just one, one thing before I make a suggestion, to, to a question I think Councilmember Herman had regarding just comparative policies or comparisons to some other communities, Appleton is one of the more recent ones that went to one. We do have to keep in mind, Oshkosh assesses the property owners at a higher rate than most other communities around us. Two thirds of the special assessment goes to the property owners, and then the city picks up a third. That's not the same as most other communities, and that's why Appleton, for one example, was able to have a lower...
No, it's one third, one third on each side.
Yes, so two thirds total, property owner and a third for the city.
He's a homeowner, one third. Don't care about my neighbor.
Appleton was able to do a lower one, because they have a lower amount that's specially assessed to, to the homeowners. And two, I, I guess, there was one thing, one, one suggestion or one, one idea that was brought up towards the end of our, our last long range finance committee meeting, it had to do with something that the city of Nina is, is doing, or suggested doing. And I think with some of the comments we've had here, it might be a good idea to send this back to long range finance to, to further discuss a little bit more, but the, what Nina is currently suggesting, at least the mayor is suggesting in Nina, is to add a, let me get the...
It was a cap.
Yep.
It's an annual transportation fee that's applied to the utility payments. And what it is, is it's based upon your...
Impervious surface.
Yes, which is, and...
On an ERU.
ERU, that's what I was looking for.
Equivalent residential, identical to stormwater.
Correct. And their suggestion is to apply that to all properties. That means then, commercial, industrial, residential, all residentials, not that there needs to be a differentiation, but it, it applies to all properties then, and it has the ability to potentially eliminate all special assessments then. And you could potentially even include the sidewalk work that you may, may want to consider as well. It may be something for us to send back to long range finance, just to, to, to look at those details of that potential option as well. That was something that came up late, it is newer, it's, it's not common, and that may be something we, we want to consider one last time before we make a final suggestion.
When I researched, I was the one that brought that up, because I had heard about it. When I researched it, it was the only community I could find in the state that does it under that.
This is brand, this is brand new.
It's brand new?
Yeah.
And it's low, lower cost. They're, they're equal...
We're not going to have a whole lot to go off of, is my point, so...
Not a lot of data.
But, but they, they're similar numbers, and it, and I think if you let long range finance take a look at that, give us a little time, maybe we can give some data on that.
There's one other consideration, too. When people hear that this is going to take care of their street project, they're thinking the project. They don't think what's underneath the street. So everyone's thinking...
Take education.
Yep. Totally education.
That's why I wanted to bring that up.
You're still going to get hit with a bill.
Yes.
It just won't be potentially, well, it won't be the street, but I think this is misleading, and it's going to be confusing, as Karen said, there's a lot of education involved in the public.
That's why.
But this is not a free ride, by any stretch of the imagination.
We're certainly not saying that.
But I think it's, it's great that the long range is, is looking at this, because these are the recommendations that I think are good for the city, it's good for discussion, and if we go there, like I said, I just think we need to see a good policy in place that has things built into it so that it, it can grow and maybe eventually cover all the assessments.
And I don't remember last, the last suggestions from long range finance regarding this issue over the last two, three, four, five years, but nearly unanimous in, in their opinion that this was something that was important, and they wanted to bring it, we wanted to bring it forward to, to council to seriously consider.
Well, the long range finance committee had this for... Well, the long-range finance committee had this for several months, and at first meeting I attended, they were all over the map. They weren't necessarily there, but you made a lot of progress by the second meeting. But I, I'm not especially in favor of sending this back. I think that the things that have been asked for could be brought to council in, you know, our packets. Why should we protract this any further by adding a couple of pieces of information that could come to us when we consider it?
We're in no rush. This has no budgetary impacts for the 2019 budget. Whatever is going to be done is going to be done, and we're going to special assess or we're going to fee for it, and we'll have no budget implications. So, to push it for a month only gives us more time to make it right or to try to get it better.
Does long-range finance even meet in December?
I just double-checked and it's on the docket for December 5th. But going, going back to your, your comment, Mr. Love, is it a deeper question of should council or long-range finance even be looking at that assessment policy to make some tweaks in that? And it goes hand in hand with the assessment so that, that if we're, because we would have to make some language changes in that assessment policy, I would think if we go forward with a vehicle registration fee, that, that covers how that assessment. So, that policy's going to have to be looked at no matter what.
Oh, absolutely.
And the percentage of how we assess and who we don't assess and all of that, because I think it plays into what, what you're all saying, and, and there's some very good points. And, you know, I've always been one to, to take a lot of recommendations from our committees because that's our citizens, really, talking to their council members. And so, I think it is important that we take time like Councilmember Mugler said, and we look at it. But I'd like to see some sample policies of what it would look like, because I agree with Councilmember Paul Mary. We have a lot of information, right? We know roughly what it's going to generate in, in potential revenue, what we could use it for to reduce assessments to the homeowner. So, why don't we just start moving a little bit with a rough draft, maybe, of what it looks like, what, what staff is thinking, what, what Ms. Larson thinks can, how it can impact our budgets? We could take a look at, because there, there are two separate issues. One is the VRF or some other option. The other one is the, the policy itself. And we could, for lack of a better term, do a red line version. I mean, we already have our policy. It's just a matter of what we amend it to. And I think the committee was, and I'm, and if I'm speaking out of turn, just say, but I, I think the, the last bullet, the intention was to give council a general idea of what specific areas they wanted to change. And I, quite honestly, I give, I give the committee and council a lot of credit. You understand the issue so well that you're arguing over nuances. You understand it very well. It's just a matter of what your comfort zone is. Everybody has preferences here, and it's very clear, and that's, that's part of why you have the committee to give you that input. I think we can take a look at that. I think we could, with Mr. Robby and his staff, Ms. Larson and her staff, we could prepare a red line version. Every time a version gets changed, we'll have to do a fiscal analysis. So, you'll have to bear with us because we may, may not be able to answer that question on the spot, but I think we've done enough analysis to have a fairly good idea. With respect to timing, we would likely bring special assessments to council in February prior to doing the bids and everything. I'd prefer to stick to that schedule just because we need to stay on schedule with our street projects because we get better bids when we do it. The policy can go as far as February. So, you've got the committee. We could do a couple, a couple meetings and take a look at that. If, and most of the committees here tonight, so you got a fairly good idea of.
What I, what I would suggest, okay, Ms. Allison Osby.
Thank you. I guess in having this discussion, the one thing that I want to make sure is that we at some point actually do something that gets our citizens' input, because if you were on the outside, as I've just been listening here, it almost sounds like this is a done deal and we're moving forward. And so, I think the citizens need to know we're not at that point yet. I don't think we're saying that, even though it sounds like it, and we do need input. So, I think we have to figure that out. The other thing I would like to know is what are we going to do to make sure that at a bat of an eye, this $30 vehicle registration fee doesn't become 50, 60, 75, $100, like we have seen with other things? And, and I love Ms. Bowen's point about education, and I think somebody else had mentioned that as well, because the conversations of what's been in the, in the media so far, in my humble opinion, make it look as if it's saving everybody. It's, it's free. And I don't think it's being, I don't think it's being marketed, if that's an appropriate term, or I think presented in a very transparent way. So, I think that's another thing we have to be extremely, extremely careful about. Education is good, and I think to Ms. Bowen's point, that would certainly be essential. But I can say, we've been calling it vehicle registration fee for a couple of years now, and I would say 15 out of 15 people still call it wheel tax. So, we just have to, I think, be very mindful, very thoughtful, most of all transparent about what this really means, and I don't think we should take an assumptive approach that this is how the citizens want it to go down.
There's one other comment, and the reason for, you know, holding off on timing is what may happen to Madison with a new governor? I think we've got to feel loud for a bit to say, will there be some major changes to how things are being done in? Pardon?
I don't think we're going to have major changes. We've got two, two big.
Well, we don't, we don't know.
Could we, when we do get this ultimately, could we have that 50% of the special assessments, like over the last few years, what that dollar amount that has actually come in out of the special assessments that were attributed in that analysis?
Obviously showing how much we've taken loans for you soon.
Right. How much has actually come in at the time it was built? And I know they're like a year or two sometimes trailing after the project, and then how much was taken out in the 15-year option?
Yeah, there's a lot more complicated answer to that because prior to Ms. Larson's arrival, the city had pretty much financed it internally, and the fund was in such a negative position in the, I think it was just before you got on the council, Deputy Mayor Paul Mary, but there was a discussion about how bad the fund is, and Deb remembers that quite well because the fund was, had such a poor cash flow. Previous finance directors, every once in a while, would basically throw a million dollars into the fund through borrowing to keep it solvent, for lack of a better term. We looked at it, and Ms. Larson said, "We need to do more than that, and that's why we're putting close to $1 million to keep that fund kind of turned around." Part of it was, when I got here, I'm the troublemaker, I did streets because the council said, "Do streets." And we did streets, and then we assessed, we did more streets, so we assessed more. So, then the amount we were financing was rising, and that's when, by the time Trina got here, she said, "We need to tap the brakes a little bit so that we can finance these things." And now the fund's in a better position, but it is not solvent. It's just floating better than it did before, but we're still floating in terms of not having enough in the fund.
And I wasn't necessarily asking for the fund balance. I was just asking for the figure that we assess.
How much we assess and how much we bring in.
And how much actually came in from that assessment.
But I'm not really sure what the, what the purpose of that.
Because it goes to the point of whether or not we bring in on this annual basis versus how much of it's getting financed over 15 years. So, in, in my mind, that's kind of a simple math thing, but maybe I'm looking at it differently.
I think the amount financed would be zero.
Right, exactly. The amount financed would be zero. We wouldn't be waiting 10, 15 years on half of what we assess. But then we may be losing, what, that 6% interest that we charge?
Yeah, but we don't want to be the bank.
Are we making money on the?
No, we don't want to be the bank. Exactly.
Right, so.
Mr. Buckholz.
Sorry.
Yeah, just a quick shortie here. My recollection is, in having been in the long-range finance, actually since its inception, which I think has been over eight years.
Thank you. For your patience.
Yeah, your husband had a little something to do with that. But we've had this item come to us over a year and a half, I would guess, if those who can help me remember how often we've had it. And at certain points in time, it came on the agenda, and certain points of time, it went off the agenda. Either we table it or there was no more interest in it. But we felt, or at least I feel, that it all emanated from the council, that the council had some need to want to investigate a vehicle registration fee. And then so, through the link of the city staff, that was brought to long-range finance, who was asked to look at that as an option to help in road repair costs and, and help with making a recommendation to council to address whether or not a vehicle registration fee would be something that council will approve. It was our charge to only come up with a recommendation. We weren't charged with bringing up a full policy. And I fully agree with you, Mr. Herman, that it certainly doesn't give you a whole enchilada here. But again, that was not our charge. Our charge was just to assess what a vehicle registration fee would do for us and in what manner could we bring it forward. And then we've had some motions put forward, and that's how we've gotten to this point.
Okay, good.
Not excusing what we've done. Everything has been stately corrected. The education, the getting that message out correctly, if you were to initiate a fee that the citizens understand the value of it and the elements of it and all that is very relevant. And I'm glad those all came out so that I don't have to bring them out. So, I appreciate you giving me that last.
No problem, no problem. Then, it is, is segueing off of Mr. Buckholz, then I think that, that the long-range fin, I thank the long-range finance committee for everything they've done. I think it's now up to council to, you know, is, is I think, you know, it, as we have indicated, it's, we need to look at the policy, at the special assessment policy. So, I think that it's, it's incumbent upon us as council members to, you know, Mark, here's an agenda item for, for Tuesday. Under council directions, let's put what we want to do with vehicle, with vehicle registration fee on there. And I think you've got the clear.
But I think to Harold's point, it's also, you want to ask the committee to take a look at the policy because they didn't do a deep dive into the policy. All they did was res one, res two. Do the math for us. That's, I mean, is that kind of where you want to go to?
I, I was thinking, yes, let's get the, let's do, let's do a red line on the policy. And.
But are you asking the long-range finance, or are you asking staff to do the red line?
I don't see how we can.
It's got to be staff.
It's got to be staff.
It's got to be staff. We have to do the redlining, but I think, but do you want the long-range finance committee to take a look at it and evaluate our red line draft?
I think they should, they've been very involved in this more than the council.
But I agree with council, councilmember Allison Osby. I almost think we need to have a public information meeting.
But we.
You know, once we start, no, not, not you, I mean.
Thank you.
But, you know, I think as we move it forward, we need more public input because the four emails I got, and I think all council members got it, was citizens don't want it.
I would agree.
And yet, everyone I've talked to, except for one person, has wanted it.
Right, so that's what I'm saying. I think we need, once we, if we keep continuing to move forward with it, that I think we need, because we're adding something pretty substantial, and we need the public to have an input. Put up maps, show things, you know?
There were those opportunities at those long-range finance because those were, there were some public that attended at those as well, and they were publicized. Not that that's enough, because I agree with Councilmember Allison Osby that, you know, and Mr. Herman, that yes, we should make another opportunity because it's, you know, those things aren't always well-attended, even when there's the bigger items.
All right. Can I just make a point? I haven't chimed in really yet. I think with as much education we can put out there, people usually don't care until it actually hits their, their bill.
Exactly.
And when they hear about this $30 a year fee, they think it's going to cover the whole thing. And the average citizen doesn't look at it, well, it's going to cover this portion, this portion, this portion. They're going to look at the whole bill. They're not going to read the lines. They're going to look at what they actually have to pay. So, I mean, we need some examples of what, like a $12,000 bill would be reduced to, and that's the number we need to tell the citizens that the average household is going to, average house, lot size is going to pay this. And that's the number they care about.
Best estimation would be about half.
So, we need to tell them that it's going to cover half their.
So, a $5,000, the one that we had done two years ago, we have 50-foot of frontage. Instead of five grand, it would have been 2,500.
And that's what we need to tell people. It's not going to cover their whole bill because they're outraged enough already. And there's people that say, "We don't do enough roads in the city." But then the people that get their roads done, they say, "Well, we didn't even need our road done, and we got this huge bill."
Exactly.
Everybody's for government until, everybody's against government until they need government, and then as soon as government fixes the problem. All right, so then what I would do is, is, all right, the next long-range finance committee is December 5th. Pam, would you please note that as a possible joint meeting that council members may attend? I'm extending invitation to council members to do that.
We can, we can probably put it with, because Trina normally puts that.
All right, well, as whoever puts the notice out, to mark that as a possible joint meeting and then to bring forward the, and then do the red line, send it out to council members, send it out to the long-range finance committee, and then we'll hash it out. We'll begin, we'll begin the discussion from there.
Could I just say on the public input portion, because we did have a couple of citizens in Florida, if you just looked at your own agenda, it says item three, joint discussion, long-range finance committee uses a vehicle registration fee, which makes the assumption it is in place. I think the way it was designed to have said, "This is a workshop between the long-range finance committee and the council on a registration fee." If you read it this way, you can almost impose that or suggest that, yes, it's already in part of the budget because in item three, you're going through the capital budget and you continue with the budget. And so, I think there's a little misdirection there that maybe you didn't intend to make, but maybe the word workshop would have said more to citizens in terms of output, input, I don't know. But just wanted to make that point, so.
I think that there, I think that there was, I think that that's what the meeting announcement, that there was an announcement that said that, that there would be the, the review of this. And I don't remember Pam exactly or Trina what the exact wording was.
It's a council staff workshop.
Okay, if that's it with the, our workshop, the joint finance committee, want to say, thank everyone for all their hard work, the hours you have put into this and the thought. So, we will more than likely see you on December 5.
Well, thank you. Back to your board and stuff.
Thanks, Harold.
Harold, you've been through this before.
Yeah, no, I learned a lot sitting there, listening to that, yeah. Concrete as.
Bring it back.
Now, number E, direction staff.
Just ended the video.
November 14th, yeah, November 14th meeting. Are you set? Anything from us?
Well, there are a couple more pages in the package to receive tonight, and if we could just go through that. The last few pages is after all the vehicle registration fee stuff. The first one is the small print exhibit A. That's our general worksheet that, that Ms. Larson uses to take recommendations or direction from council and, and basically calculate what the impact on the, the levy is going to be and the mill rate so that when you get to your final meeting on November 14th, we are pretty prepared for that.
Okay, if I may ask a question here. There, it's broken down into several sections, and the same item, for example, the full-time equipment master mechanic is listed in one, two, three.
Well, you can save yourself the trouble. If you go to the next page, the count's there. Trina, Trina actually did another one to kind of follow up.
All right.
And I want to get the council to that page for that reason, just to give you an idea of.
You're on the debt analysis one or?
No, the, the page after, it doesn't have a title on it. It's just a little worksheet.
Oh, that one.
And it has initials across the top. So, council members who gave us input, we, we put your initials down, and you can see the count that, that Mr. Peck's talking about. For example.
No, 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 Mark. What I'm, let, let me finish my, my request first is, it appears that at the bottom, there's a total and everything is just, is there somewhere, is because apparently there's, like I say, there's four people that brought forward the battalion chief backfill. Can we get a worksheet that just basically has, here's where we are, here's what the, that particular adjustment is going to do to the.
Yeah, it is on that sheet.
It is, it's on the other sheet.
If you could let me go through my presentation, then you might, I may satisfy you, I may not. But normally what council does is, as they reach consensus on issues, there's a little line, and it's right below where the line says ambulance. Those are the ones that are kind of already in the mix. Either staff has made some adjustments. In this case, all we've done so far is we've made some minor adjustments based on additional information. We got the ICI holiday, that's income continuation disability insurance holiday, so we saved seventy-eight thousand five hundred. But we also got the notice about the municipal services payment reduction. And then Chief Stanley and Ms. Larson took a look at our revenue assets for ambulance. So that's why, that's where we stand today without any council direction so far.
What's, what, can you just explain on the transit one? I think it was Matt Muger, or is it the levy reduction, apply fund balance? What?
I'd be happy to go through them, but I want to do the general overview and then we can do the deep dive into each of these individual ones. So council members were asked to give us input on those things. We have, in the past, used this sheet with all the small print.
Right.
But then we said, well, it's hard to find the commonalities with everybody unless you put it in a different fashion. So that impact, for example, seventy-three thousand. So the next sheet was intended to show you, you do have some commonalities. And if we could, with council's direction, if you see some common themes that are developing with council, we can move those up. And the, two of them got, or three of them, got three or four votes. Or I, and I shouldn't use the word vote. It's really a count.
Support.
Yeah. Because independently, council members gave us this input. So we put them all, we put them all together. So now you can kind of compare your colleagues' take on this. And if you didn't provide input, kind of gives you a take on your, helps you develop your own take on this as well. The impact itself, Trina's shown on the sheet itself. For example, the first one from council member Mugerhour is the master mechanic. So that shows what the impact would be in terms of the levy impact, the tax rate impact. So once we move things up, we can give you a running total of where you're at. So we can do that, but the idea behind it was on the second sheet, give you an idea of where we're at, where each individual council member went. So for example, council member Mugerhour had expenditure changes of two-hundred-eighty thousand with revenue offsets of one-hundred-twenty for a net impact of changes of one-hundred-sixty thousand. Now that says that using his mythical four-hundred thousand, he has about one-hundred-nineteen thousand left. And council members can take a look at their colleagues' input and say, how do I feel about that one? Knowing that if you go to the other sheet, you can kind of get the impact from each of I don't know if that exactly does what you were asking for.
Is, is, in past years, we've had, when we do this adjustment sheet, we have adjustment one, adjustment two, adjustment three, adjustment four. So in this instance, what I'm saying is, is take those, is basically just in essence, you know, there's, there's a Chinese menu here. We got this over here, we got this over here. What I'm saying is, is have, is here's where we're at. If we add the full-time mechanic, this is what the impact is. If we, is basically.
Yeah. We do that at the, at the next week's meeting because then you're making some final decisions here. So this is still early in the, even though we're a week away, we're still early in the process of council. This is the first time the council's really.
Seen it.
Discussed these.
Altogether.
I want to do this, I want to do that. Up to now, it's been more staff giving you stuff. Now council's giving us the feedback on, on all the tons of input we've provided you. So, yeah, we can do that and that's what we've done in the past. And Ms. Larson brings her, her laptop and starts inputting these things in. As an interim move, given the fact that there's council members who have given us, you know, three or four members have given us an indication that they like some of those, are those we move up the list and then narrow our discussion down to those areas that there is not unanimous agreement on, but they're worth keeping on the table to talk about. At least one of you felt strongly enough about these things that you said, I want to talk about those. So our thinking was, are three or four levels of support enough to move those into, into the upper sheet? And then you'll say, all right, now our running total is, is this. And now you know how much you have left to, to look at from a, from an expenditure restraint as well as a taxation standpoint. So.
So to that point, I guess you, you could take the top three, I guess, and say there's probably enough consensus, even though not every council member weighed in. If there's any council members here that feel that, you know, let's just take the battalion chief backfill pay. If there's four of us that thought that might be worth putting back, putting into the budget. If there's any council members here that, you know, kind of feel the same thing, you know, just because they didn't get an email to Trina. I mean, I didn't mind in the Ryland or Public Library, but it was raining that day. But anyways, you know, I, I, we need to move a little bit instead of waiting that until that very last night. I just.
Is because I think that is what I'm, the reason I'm asking for that is to just basically have one total where that is because even if there was only one council person that brought it forward, that person felt that it is important. And I think what we need to do is, is have that information totaled so we know if we, if we do all of these, here's the impact. If we don't do this, if we, is, so we can understand what the impact of all of these are on expenditure restraint moving forward. Before we get to the meeting next week.
You kind of did that. If you look at that one sheet, it says, yes, non-applicable, yes, 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 and one, no. Based on recommendations.
So every council member was very cognizant of the four-hundred thousand expenditure restraint limit. So that, because that was.
I think Tom, we should go back to Tom. And we should probably talk about the four-hundred thousand because not everybody was able to attend all of the entire budget meeting in the direction we did leave council with.
I did, I, I appreciate that. I've been catching up on the tapes, but yeah. But, and I think it would be good for, you know, the public as well.
To understand. And so what we're working from is to meet our expenditure restraint, which gives the city about a million three of revenue. The council can now add up to four-hundred thousand dollars of expenditures. And so what our goal was, was to take, for you to take the amendment sheet and come up to what are your desired fund needs and what is the, for you to know the impact of those items that you would wish to fund, which that's how we get the separate individual council breakouts. And so what I've essentially done is I have started with the ten dollars and about fifty-one cents. Right at that line with staff. And each council member that included their own, the items they would like to bring forward, that then calculates forward individually for each council member. So the, the mayor is a very good example. His mill rate and his levy does not change because what has been proposed for him is neutral. He put in an expenditure, he put in a revenue, and there was no change in mill rate or levy. But council member Mugerhour, what this does is it starts at the line of staff and then line by line, each item which he chose to fill that four-hundred thousand with, it calculates how much of each enhancement will cost in mill rate and in levy. And each council member is calculated individually like that. Is that helpful?
Uh huh.
I had a question with that levy reduction that Matt proposed, would that cause problems with future budgets down the road with doughnut hole type things?
The only one that would, in that case, would be, and that was Mr. Herman's question. So maybe it kind of melds those two together. The one on transit. We also provide a council with that, that how to reallocate funds type of thing in the worksheet. And this one didn't necessarily get in there, but using fund balance is, is like taxing. If you're going to use fund balance, you don't want to use it for one-time expenditures and you want to use it for, or you don't want to use it for ongoing expenditures. You want to use it for a one-time expenditure. Debt reduction is a good one. A major capital item. So Mr. Mugerhour suggested that we use some fund balance for some operating costs. It's too bad he's not here because he could be able to explain it better himself. He did ask us what we had intended to do with the transit fund because we were proposing the use of some fund balance. They were specifically for capital items and for one-time retirement payouts. So we weren't using it for ongoing expenses. That's, in our opinion, that's a dangerous precedent to set. The other ones are revenue offsets that were in the enhancement packages presented by the department heads in all the other cases. Or savings. You'll recall that Chief Stanley was asked a question about the firefighter and would there be some offsetting reductions? And the chief indicated there'd be some offsetting reductions in overtime. So that thirty thousand negative in Matt's area, that is reflecting that thirty thousand dollar savings. And then the sixty thousand for the master mechanic and the civil engineer, those were discussed by Mr. Robbie during his presentations regarding his enhancement. So that is the only case on this list where it's a use of fund balance. And I don't mean to do it with Matt not being here, but we don't recommend that because it's a use of fund balance for ongoing costs rather than one-time, unique type costs.
Okay.
But you can see each, each and every decision, recommendation or suggestion that a council member has, has a levy impact. And so that impacts the rate and the levy increase. And then we do a running total. So in the example of the mayor, as Ms. Larson pointed out, no impact on the tax rate, so it's still ten point fifty, ten fifty-one, ten point five oh six. In the case of Mr. Mugerhour, because of the variety of things he did, he gets down to, or gets up to ten fifty-five. And then on down the line, each, each successive council member giving their own independent input. And you can see that everybody's a little different. It is, somebody said the word like, like a Chinese menu. Yeah, a little bit of this, a little bit of that, but everybody has their own opinion on what they'd like to see. And the, the next page was just kind of get you an idea of where you had some consensus. But each individual council member, you know, will continue to do that. I guess today we were looking at, is there anything on the consensus that we can move above the line along with the staff recommendations that you can reach consensus on now? And then we're even more prepared for next Wednesday's meeting. And then you have one final shot at it, but the more we can get consensus on tonight, we'll be okay. And the count, the department heads are here because there are some enhancements on the table and you may have some questions about those and they want to be here to answer them.
I would think the one I've had for, if you both were supporters, the battalion chief backfill pay, how do other council members feel about that?
I agree.
Yes.
So I moved that up. And going down the list, master mechanic had.
Three.
Three.
I actually was part of that.
Yeah, and I, I would, I would think anything with, with, well, three at a minimum.
Four's and three's.
Guys are okay, then they go over the top. So the mechanic and the civil engineer?
Right.
Because out of respect, council member Paul Mary, Deputy Mayor Paul Mary had that point five civil engineer. I mean, that's, I'm not sure if you want to chime in on that one because that was your little take on it.
Yeah, it was just, yeah, I just submitted a couple of things that I thought maybe could be modified, you know, with the reduced, or a narrower frame for like the employee education program. I gave some specifics. And then with the, the civil engineer, my thought was perhaps having someone that they brought up, you know, from a apprentice level or a, I don't want to use the word intern, but maybe graduate student, perhaps that might be an option if we didn't go the full boat on that one, if there was a halftime opportunity there or not.
I think it's got to be.
This is more of a season. When it's a civil engineer, that is typically when somebody comes out, and James, I'm going to let you, you know, take over for this. When somebody comes out of engineering school, they're usually put as an engineering tech. When they're at the classification of a civil engineer, they are, I don't know if they're always a P E.
Somebody coming out of school with an engineering degree that would be coming in as that entry level engineering position.
On this one?
Yes. You know, that could be, you know, this position could be somebody right out of school to somebody with five, six, seven years of experience.
Well, that's, it's six, seven years, five, six, seven years of experience is what I'm talking about.
Well, but this position could be somebody right out of school up to about that level of experience.
You think you can hire somebody half-time?
No, I do not think.
All right. That's where I'm getting at.
Don't necessarily mean half-time, like twenty hours a week, but, you know, some of these more creative, like job sharing type opportunities or seasonal, seasonality to it, similar to like a, you know, six or eight month contract kind of thing. But that was just a question as to whether or not that's even an option in that field because I've heard of it, but that doesn't mean it's readily available.
Yeah, I've not really come across much on the engineering field that way. You know, certainly I have seen it in other places, but I've not come across it much in that field.
Okay. That's all.
Okay.
And I guess just to add to the modifications on the employee educational program, I felt that if we narrowed it, we, we looked at ten thousand instead of twenty that was requested for the purpose of narrowing it to only certifications or technical vocational education as opposed to, you know, higher ed degree programs where there are other financial opportunities for those folks.
I had received a variety of input from council members and so anybody chime in who do talk with me about it. But the mayor had put in something on contingency and that got me thinking that some of these ideas, such as the educational program, maybe need a little more work. We talked earlier about special assessment policy. We don't have a policy on this yet. And maybe it'd be more appropriate for us to get the policy. And if we do have a contingency set up, we can appropriate the money once council's satisfied that we've got a program that you're comfortable with. And so I'd, I'd suggest keeping it out, don't even add it as an enhancement at this time. And with, with funds in contingency, we can always come back for you. And we can use it as a pilot program, give you some ideas because I think there are going to be a lot of questions. I, I think you're right. We're going to get so many different questions. And rather than give you on something that's untested, we'll give you something that we're very comfortable with from a policy standpoint. And then we can, we can fund it through contingency and then continue it in future years if council feels it's worthwhile.
So we've, we've taken care of the first three. And when there's a bunch of twos, I want to jump down to the rental inspections. We've made a very big push towards the rental inspection program. Are we good with the twenty-five thousand?
Actually, I was going to say, I'm, I'm very much in favor of that for the reason that we have put in an enormous amount of resources, an enormous amount of time, both council and staff and citizens, that I think we certainly should do that. The other thing I would like to bring up as well is I'm surprised that there wasn't more regarding the cyber insurance policy because obviously we talked about now that we're accepting credit cards, debit cards. I do not want to be sued for, we do not want the taxpayer going through lawsuit or identity theft.
I agree.
And so that is something for sure. At least I am a, a big proponent on.
I supported that too.
And that was an oversight on my end, I meant to put that in.
Well, you only had four hundred thousand to play with and I think.
I was way under though. I only came in at three fifty. I didn't max out the credit card like some of you.
I used all available funds.
Yeah. Well, you know, and I guess the reason, and I know I'll probably make Chief Smith unhappy, but. You know, we're, we're doing the studies, you know, spending the money on the studies for, for the departments on staffing. I'd like to hear this, what, what the study says first, before we approve any positions.
Let me give you a running total of where you are because it goes to Mr. Peck's point. Now, sorry. Now that we are, because what, what I've heard is the, the ones that got four, a count of four and three and three, those are in the battalion chief, backfill pay, master mechanic, civil engineer, the cyber insurance policy at fifteen thousand, and the rental inspections at twenty-five. So Ms. Larson has it at two eighty-two, eight hundred on the, on the expenditure restraint side. Because that's, we have to watch expenditure restraint, then we got to watch levy after we net out some of those things. Master mechanic has offsetting revenue, civil engineer has offsetting revenue.
One seventy, two hundred.
Yeah. So it's an impact of one seventeen, two hundred. Doing my quick math, that's about three and a half cents more. Maybe, maybe only three cents now with the, yeah, so we're about three cents more. So instead of ten fifty-one, it's about ten fifty-four. Last year's rate, just FYI, was ten fifty-five. So at this point right now, you're about a penny under where you were last year and you still got about a hundred twenty thousand in expenditure restraint capacity to go.
Well, you know, I, I support it and, and I actually talked to my brother who was a digital evidence investigator. He swears that that's position we need. And my, my thinking was it would free up a detector to be out there doing what a detector's supposed to be doing, which is investigating crime. And we hire somebody that really knows and has the training and background in digital evidence because that's where it's going in today's world with all the. evidence because that's where it's going in today's world with all the body cameras, all the cameras in the squad cars, all the other digital things that the, you know, even the police department, our fire department is probably doing more and more digital type things that they could cross over that position a little bit.
But didn't Chief give us the list in order of the need, like in priority?
Yeah, he did, he did.
So you're just saying that you feel like that?
I feel that at this point because we're doing a study of how many employees the police department needs and where do they need them and what positions? Wait till that comes. But this is a separate, because this is a non-sworn position, I would think, Chief Smith?
It is.
Why don't you come on, Chief? And, and I just think that, again, in today's world with all the technology and all the digital cameras, I mean, I know Chief Smith, when he, when he talked council, I shouldn't say talked council, but gave a great presentation on why we need body cameras for the officers and the liability and all that, that I just think that at this point, not knowing the other study, but this position is one that I think is beneficial and it frees a detective up that could be investigating crimes, so.
As related to the study, if I can, it's...
I know you said it's pretty much done.
It's drafty done and this is the, this one position is one piece of a need, but it is the, it's the lowest priority for this year as you'll see in the presentation.
Right.
And we're currently doing the function right now. But it, it isn't my, my priority, what I need right now.
Can I just chime in real quick? It seems like, I'm assuming that the remainder is probably going to go to police. And this man here is the expert in Oshkosh here for the police department.
Appreciate that.
Yeah. And I mean, I think his priority should be our priority.
And I believe that you indicated that that priority came out of this draft, of the study that you're looking at, right?
Priorities, the way that the draft is spelled out, it gives, it goes through the whole functions of the police department and it spells out identify problems and potential solutions. And this was one of those potential solutions that the consultant has come up with.
Okay, so that didn't necessarily specify, but that's the way you...
Well, police sergeant and the digital evidence technician are both a part of the recommendations.
What was your number one choice? The patrol sergeant, wasn't it? Sorry if I put it in your mouth.
Patrol officer, patrol sergeant are like, they're neck and neck. The patrol sergeant would allow me the opportunity to give some relief to our special event sergeant and all the work that goes on. And essentially what we're doing is just replacing the one sergeant who's currently with the vice narcotics unit. It's not a, the vice narcotics unit sergeant was pulled from the street in order to give supervision to that unit. This position for the sergeant just puts that sergeant back on the street. And as I indicated during our original budget meetings with my young staff, a first-line supervisor who can say, no, you need to do it this way, is probably one of our most critical needs right now because of the, because of the youngsters that we have.
So it covers budget and safety too at the same time? It covers both bases?
Yes.
Well, how much did we have left? Like 121?
So, so...
What was the number?
You're at 117,200.
That we have left.
Net.
Net. So could we just bank that and perhaps use it when we know more?
Uh-huh. Because if you do a patrol sergeant, that eats up the whole contingency. It eats up 117,000 right there.
It's the coincidence of we have 117 left and the sergeant's 117. I just can't, I can't escape.
What was the reduction for master mechanic again?
30,000.
60,000.
60,000, yes.
But we do want to use that 117. We should...
Yeah, but could we essentially bank it? I mean, do we have, do we ultimately have to make the decision right now? Or can we, can we kind of, I guess, have a rainy day fund in case we decide to do it?
Levy for it, but have it in contingency when council sees the chief's report and they could act on it at that point. They're not committing to it.
How about a what-if fund?
Well, there's always, I mean, if you follow what Green Bay's issue is, they're going to be technically not laying off five police officers, but they're not going to fill positions upon retirement. Well, we could, we could, I think my first year, and I think the mayor will remember, I think we did have the police department too. We told them they couldn't hire for the first six months of the year as a cost savings measure. But then they could hire after the first six months. Because it takes a year to hire them anyways. So you're almost a year and a half in, and the officer's not useful to the police department for about the first year either. So now you got two years. By the time you hire, train them and get them out there that he can really be on his own is almost a two-year process.
So we're really banking it, but also on the assumption that would not be a hire until mid-year.
And to speak to what Councilmember Herman was speaking of, in my experience is that that happens, it's happened in other jurisdictions that I've worked for, that you say, okay, chief of police, we're going to allow you to have a position, but we don't want you to fill it until here because there's a savings of whatever ever. And I certainly can, I certainly can live with that because it will take me some time to fill the position.
And that comes right into special event season too, if you do six months out, right?
Yes.
Because the sergeant would probably be an internal promotion, probably from within your, and then so the opening technically would be a patrol position on the bottom up.
Bumping effect, yeah. Yeah, the bumping effect, correct.
Which would probably save some money at the bottom end too because the person that he'd be replacing would be a lower wage.
Yes.
Correct.
That give us what?
Well, you, you, spending capacity at this point with everything the council's given us direction on, we're down to 117,200. Coincidentally, the chief sergeant enhancement is 117,000. I think that's what, what Deb was making.
That's three people that would want it because...
Put it in.
Put it in tentatively, the way...
Call it contingency?
Yes.
But funded with tax, but funded with tax.
I like my 10,000.
Correct. That's about another three cents, so that would probably get your running total up to about 10.57. Where the 2018 rate was 10.55, this would be about 10.57. And the levy would be roughly, we didn't do the running number on the levy, but...
On the previous page.
Oh, okay.
Is it, Mark, and I think Alan's here yet.
That goes to Tom's point.
I don't think...
Where we at? What's our running tally?
10.61 here.
Thanks, Chief. Not to drag yourself, but with the corridor plan for Jackson Street, is there any way with that traffic study that we could incorporate a corridor off of that?
That's what we're trying to do.
But it's kind of a separate thing, right? Because you're asking for 37,500.
But I thought the traffic study by Jackson Street Neighborhood Association was coming out of great neighborhoods. So why would we include that here?
This is an area north of Murdoch up to I-41.
Right.
And we were trying to look at the corridor. We do have funding for the lower half. We actually don't. And since we thought they were so closely interconnected that to really study it separately would be a disservice to, probably cost us more money as well.
Sure, okay.
Do it all at once.
Exactly. That's what we were suggesting with the enhancement.
Well, and that's what I'm saying is was there a way to stretch the traffic one to go farther out, say it's just traffic? But there's probably not enough money.
That's coming out of your great neighborhoods funding, right? So doesn't it have to be kind of a neighborhood association?
Yeah.
They were concentrating Murdoch South when it comes to the safety improvements. It's not really safety improvements to the north, it's more land use and access questions and appearance.
Well, if we do the sergeant's position, we don't have the money to put the corridor plan in.
Well, there's, there's...
This year, right?
There's two things. One is depending on when you implement the sergeant is one thing. And at the beginning, at the top of the page, we still have a current contingency of 78.5.
Well, that, I think Chief Smith's comment was that he would probably be able to make the sergeant's promotion internally, so that salary would have to get covered. But that by the time you hire the police officer, replace that officer that moved up to sergeant, you would probably have almost a whole year before it hits the box.
There'd be time, yeah. There'd absolutely be time. The other one about Mr. Davis is it's a, it's a one-time expense, it's not an ongoing effort.
Right. That was the piece that I was going to ask because that would be a consultant. But here's the other question, the other two corridor plans, those were done by Housel Levine and they are, they're not yet implemented, they're still in the design phase. So is there, what is the, I guess, the urgency of doing this this year while we're still working on Oshkosh Ave as well? I mean, other than if that traffic study were to occur this year, the, just the seamlessness, is that really the only, is it an opportunity cost? Okay.
Because you're not, you don't anticipate the same company doing both, right?
We would actually...
Bit it out as both?
That they could do both. So that either, if they couldn't do it themselves, they'd have to team up with somebody who could do move pieces.
You, anything else?
So is there some consensus that you want to try to weave in the Jackson Street corridor study?
I think it's critical.
It makes sense.
I think it's critical because it can also enhance our potential for some type of agreement with Ton of Oshkosh. Because we don't have a land use agreement with Ton of Oshkosh. So I'm thinking that a corridor plan might be something that we could bring the Ton of Oshkosh to the table and discuss either expansion or where do we want to go? Because like I said, John Sportsop's in the county, the crematory next door is in the city. I mean, that just doesn't make sense and it hurts our sidewalk program because we'd need sidewalks out the Logan Drive. We can't get there because of Ton of Oshkosh. So I think, I think having a plan, and maybe, maybe before we put this in there, would there be any opportunity to talk to Ton of Oshkosh and say, hey, would you like to kick in a little dollars for the corridor plan? I know it's the 13th hour and your budget's probably approved, but it could benefit the Ton of Oshkosh if they're part of this Jackson Street corridor plan. I agree with you because you got a dairy farm that's part of it.
I would say put it in and ask them, I would say put it in and then, and ask forgiveness later and say, hey, can you give us five grand towards it, 10 grand?
But that doesn't necessarily require waiting a full year for the patrol sergeant position. Wouldn't that at least allow that for like just a six-month delay as opposed to a full year?
Yeah, I, you know, I think what you're missing is he can make the sergeant's, if we approve the sergeant's position, he could make that, he could test, he could probably test first of the year.
We're actually starting up a test now.
So they'll have an eligibility list? So if we approve a sergeant's position, he can fill that. But by the time he posts and gets an eligibility list for patrolmen, if we say can't hire a patrolman before, say, July, let's just say...
But what about special event season? That's what I'm thinking.
Well, that's why if we do the sergeant, he could use this, he can hire a sergeant, he could promote the sergeant at the first of the year.
Oh, okay.
So he would be in that position, trained. If he's going to be a relief sergeant for the special event, he could work with Sergeant Stenson. It's up to the chief, but we'll give, you know, if we put the position in there, he would get that. I'm saying the backfill site could go a little longer, so we wouldn't have that expense.
Looks like they've got some numbers crunched over here for us.
Survey says...
I think basically what we've, Trini gets all the credit because she's been running the numbers, I'm just summarizing it for her.
The calculation.
We can, we can include that and figure out a way to get it done under expenditure restraint. The net levy increase would be about 4.48%. I thought it'd be around 4.4, but with adding the corridor study and the other ones we already have, about 4.48, probably around 10.58 would be the rate, give or take, depending on what our funding sources are.
How much is that above what you originally...
Three cents above, well, see, that was before the state hit us in. But our current rate for 2018 was $10.55, so this would be a three-cent increase in our rate.
Okay.
So how would that affect the average homeowner to their taxes?
Three cents times three cents per thousand, 100,000, three times 100, so $30.
I think we're getting a lot of value for that $30.
No, I agree with that. So what, based on that direction, you know, council's not bound to this, council can come do things. But what we'd like to do is move those things up to that line. If you have any other thoughts and, you know, you're entitled to change your mind, think harder about this. If you could give us any other thoughts by Friday at nine, we'll add them to the list and have them in your packet for next week. Everything that you've given us direction on will be above that line and so we'll have an absolute running total for you to see. And then between now and next Wednesday, you can give some more thought and we'll be prepared for whatever changes you make. But now we've got it narrowed down, it'll be a little easier to get those things done. I, we have very good, very good feedback. This is what we were looking for.
All right, before we call it a day, I want to let everyone know that if you hear a lot of church bells going off this Sunday at 11 o'clock, it is to commemorate the 100th anniversary of the end of World War I. We've been working with the churches in the, in the community and Reed School. Mr. Larson, have I forgotten anything about Sunday?
I know you discovered it really well.
Okay.
Yes.
Just the last thing in your packet, the CIP, if there's any changes you want to make to the CIP, it's pretty late. If you want to make any changes to CIP, please let us know. What we've done there is we've included Compass Way, the, and Mr. Davis is here, the imminent nature of the development at the transload site. Staff has given me a demonstration on some software for mapping and they happen to be mapping flying over the day that they were working on the transload site, I mean, doing actual work. There were train cars all over the place there. It is actively being used and our road...
Does that road...
What's your deadline for that? Sorry. CIP, you can turn in CIP amendments, I will update on Friday.
We'll put them in the list on Friday at nine, but, you know, and then Wednesday you can also, next Wednesday...
Does that, Compass, Compass Way, does that have to be built or the concrete has to be like a truck route, the thicker concrete?
Yeah, it'll probably be eight-inch me, probably dowel joints.
This is going to be a strong road is...
Well, I'm just saying, I was hoping it was going to be that because it's going to be almost all semis.
Yeah.
Why does the road go the way it...
Now, that's a different, we're looking at different options.
Yeah, can we do a more straight-in route?
Well, yes. In short, yes. But eventually as the park develops, we made that big, I call it the big question mark sign just backwards. But we're looking more of a straight line in from Clairville because we're going to need a loop road anyway.
Yeah.
And so we're thinking that's the road we will build.
Is all of Clairville to the east, is that all in the city or is that?
No.
To the east. North of the tracks is in the city.
No, the co-op is not.
I'm sorry, the co-op is on both sides of the tracks.
Several of the resident, several of the homes that are kind of right there just north of Compass Way are still in the town as well.
Do we have any discussion that the town could help offset some cost of, because does Clairville Road going to have to be redone with all the truck traffic?
The, we're going to be looking at some improvements to Clairville in this umbrella of Compass Way. It's got to be satisfactory. That's in the zone that is all due in our border agreement or our...
That'll be attached in 2023.
Yeah, it's, it's coming to us, so the answer is going to be politely no.
Because the 26, that, that road they were going to put in from 21 to 26, that's not happening anymore, right?
On the side arterial, we have not seen any kind of corridor plan for that.
Yeah, that kind of got rerouted several years ago.
There's, there's been conversations going on at the county level to resurrect the project.
Oh, really?
Yes. I have a farm I can buy. With that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Aye.
All in favor, signify. Life is laid.
Aye, aye, aye.
Hey, Lori, right here, the very top link.